City Councilperson to represent Southeast Denver's District Four. Please visit pigfordfordenver.com to learn more about our campaign and all the fun ways that you can volunteer, and I hope to earn your support and vote. Thank you.
Tony, thank you. Diana, thank you. You both did wonderfully tonight. And audience, now it's your turn. Show your appreciation for the candidates for this council district. Thank you both very much, and thank you all and our Denver Decides partners, which include Inter Neighborhood Cooperation and the League of Women Voters of Denver. Denver Decides is presented by Denver 8 TV. We hope we have given you a fair look at each of the candidates vying to represent those of you in District Four on Denver's City Council. Remember, Denver's municipal election is taking place earlier than ever before on Tuesday, April 4th. That's Election Day. Be sure you are registered and make your voice heard. Get out there and vote. For complete election information online, go to denverdecides.com or denverseven.com/denverdecides. I'm Russell Haythorne from Denver Seven. Thank you all for joining us.
Thank you.
If I could be you and you could be me for just one hour. If we could find a way to get inside each other's minds. If you could see you through my eyes instead of your ego. I believe you'd be surprised to see that you've been blind. Walk a mile in my shoes. Walk a mile in my shoes. Yeah, before you abuse, criticize and accuse. Walk a mile in my shoes. Walk a mile in my shoes. Well, before you abuse, criticize and accuse. Walk a mile in my shoes.
Once there was a boy who did the same thing again and again. One day he was told he had autism. He got help and slowly learned how to live with it better.
Early intervention can make a lifetime of difference. Learn the signs at autism speaks.org.
Welcome to your Denver City Council. Please stand by. Full coverage of your Denver City Council begins now.
Good afternoon, everyone. This afternoon's meeting is being interpreted into Spanish. Sam or Alejandro, would you please introduce yourself and let our viewers know how to enable translation on their devices?
Yes, thank you for having us. Hello, everyone. My name is Sam Guzman with the CLC, and I'm here along with my colleague Alejandro, and we will be interpreting today's meeting into Spanish. Now, I'll give the instructions in Spanish. Buenas tardes a todos. Mi nombre es Samuel Guzman con la CLC, juntamente con mi colega Alejandro, estaremos interpretando la reunión de ahora en español. Si desea escuchar la reunión en español, va a su pantalla y busque el icono del globo que dice interpretación. Seleccione ese icono y seleccione su idioma preferido, en este caso inglés o español. Muchas gracias. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Sam. Welcome to the Denver City Council meeting of Tuesday, March 28, 2023. Council members, please rise as you're able and join Councilwoman Black in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, and council members, please join Councilwoman Black as she leads us in the Denver City Council land acknowledgement.
The Denver City Council honors and acknowledges that the land on which we reside is a traditional territory of the Ute, Cheyenne, and Arapaho peoples. We also recognize the 48 contemporary tribal nations that are historically tied to the lands that make up the state of Colorado.
It is.
It is.
Yeah.
We honor elders past, present, and future, and those who have stewarded this land throughout generations. We also recognize that government, academic, and cultural institutions were founded upon and continue to exact exclusions and erasures of indigenous peoples. May this acknowledgement demonstrate a commitment to working to dismantle ongoing legacies of oppression and inequities and recognize the current and future contributions of indigenous communities in Denver.
Thank you so much. Mr. Secretary, roll call, please.
Cede Baca.
Here.
Hernan.
Here.
Black.
Here.
Clark.
Flynn.
Here.
Gilmore.
Here.
Hines.
Here.
Cashman.
Here.
Gneech.
Ortega.
Here.
Sandoval.
Here.
Sawyer.
Here.
Madam President.
Here.
Eleven members present.
Thank you. There are eleven members present. Council has a quorum. Approval of the minutes. Are there any corrections to the minutes of March 20? Seeing none, the minutes stand approved. Council announcements. Are there any announcements today? Give it a minute. Okay, Councilwoman Sandoval.
Thank you, Madam President. I would just like to invite community to join the second 22nd Annual Cecil Travis March, which happens this Saturday, Saturday, April 1st, April Fool's Day, but it's not an April Fool's, it's actually really happening. Regis University will step off about 10 o'clock and will march to Cecil Travis Park for a huge celebration in Council District One. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ortega.
Thank you, Madam President. In light of yet another recent shooting at one of our schools, I know, I first want to thank the mayor for stepping out and saying that he will work to make sure that we have security in our schools where they are asking for them. I know there's at least one middle school in Park Hill that has a student that is on a safety plan that is asking for the same, and I think we need to have a serious conversation also about how that's going to be paid. And I sent a letter to the mayor last week because I've heard from some retired officers who are recently retired that would like to do this work, and it would be a lot cheaper to do that, whether it's Denver bearing the cost or DPS or us cost sharing, but I think we need to listen to parents, students, teachers that are asking for security in their schools. So just wanted to raise that so we could at least begin having that conversation with the administration and eventually with Denver Public Schools as well. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you, and thanks for mentioning that. I also sent a communication to the superintendent and the mayor, and we're working on a calendar right now this month to meet with them. Actually, it would probably take place in April, so great, stay tuned for that, all colleagues. Seeing no one else in queue, there are no presentations, there are no communications, no proclamations. Mr. Secretary, please read the bills for introduction.
From Finance and Governance Committee 23-0258, a bill for an ordinance designating certain properties as being required for public use and authorizing use and acquisition thereof by negotiation or through condemnation proceedings of fee simple easement or other interests, including any rights and interests related to appurtenance of properties designated as needed for the traffic and pedestrian safety improvement along the Mississippi Avenue corridor running from Elliot Street to Quivers Street, also known as Safer Main Streets, Mississippi Avenue Vision Zero Project. 23-0261, a bill for an ordinance approving and providing for the execution of a proposed grant agreement between the city and county of Denver and the state of Colorado concerning the UASI-FY-22 program and the funding thereof and authorizing the purchase of capital equipment items from the UASI-FY-22 Special Revenue Fund budget. 23-0262, a bill for an ordinance making a rescission from and appropriation in the Capital Improvements and Capital Maintenance Fund. 23-0267, a bill for an ordinance authorizing an appropriation in the general fund to make a cash transfer to and appropriation in the liability claims Special Revenue Fund. From Land Use, Transportation, and Infrastructure Committee, 23-0242, a bill for an ordinance changing the zoning classification for 1089 South Ogden Street in Washington Park West. 23-0243, a bill for an ordinance changing the zoning classification for 640 West Tennessee Avenue in Athmar Park. 23-0260, a bill for an ordinance approving a proposed amending agreement between the city and county of Denver and Colorado State University, the Western Stock Show Association, and the National Western Center Authority to modify the composition and voting of the National Western Center Authority Board by changing one non-voting board member from the Global Alaria Swansia Community to a voting board member, no change to agreement duration. 23-0264, a bill for an ordinance relinquishing portions of the easement reserved for ordinance number 324, series of 2005, recorded with Denver Clerk and Recorder at reception number 2005079520 located at 1300 Walnut Street. From Safety, Housing, Education, and Homelessness Committee, 22-1566, a bill for an ordinance approving a proposed agreement between the city and county of Denver and Denver Health Hospital Authority, DHHA, to expand the Support Team Assisted Response STAR Program.
Thank you so much. Council members, this is your last opportunity to call out an item. Councilwoman Black, will you make the motions for us today?
Yes, Madam President.
I'll do a recap. Under resolutions, no items have been called out. Under bills for introduction, no items have been called out, and under bills for final consideration, no items have been called out. Under pending, no items have been called out, and that concludes the items to be called out. All bills for introduction are ordered, published. Council members, remember, this is a consent or block vote. You'll need to vote aye, otherwise, this is your last chance to call out an item for a separate vote. Councilwoman Black, will you please put the resolutions for adoption and the bills on final consideration for final passage on the floor?
I move that the resolutions be adopted and bills on final consideration be placed upon final consideration and do pass in a block for the following items. 23-0230, 0231, 0244, 0270, 0238, 0239, 0240, 0241, 0245, 0246, 0247, 0248, 0249, 050, 0251, 0252, 0253, 0254, 0255, 0256, 0257, 0259, 0268, 0269, 0263, 0265, 0266, 0271, 0210, and 0218.
And that's been moved and seconded. Mr. Secretary, roll call.
Cede Baca.
Aye.
Hernan.
Aye.
Black.
Aye.
Flynn.
Aye.
Gilmore.
Aye.
Hines.
Aye.
Cashman.
Aye.
Ortega.
Aye.
Sandoval.
Aye.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Madam President.
Aye. Mr. Secretary, close the voting and announce the results.
Eleven ayes.
Eleven ayes. The resolutions have been adopted, and the bills have been placed upon final consideration and do pass. Tonight, there'll be a required public hearing on Council Bill 23-0215 approving the respective First Amendments to the Service Plan for the respective DeNargo Market Metropolitan District numbers one through three, and a one-hour courtesy public hearing on Council Bill 23-0186 approving and accepting the West Area Plan, which, which, which plan shall become a part of the Comprehensive Plan for 2040 for the city and county of Denver pursuant to the provisions of Section 1261 of the Denver Revised Municipal Code. Anyone wishing to speak on these matters must go online to sign up during the recess of council, and if there are no objections from members of council, we will recess until 5:30.
The largest annual train show west of the Mississippi will be returning to Denver. This model train show is truly an awesome experience for families and train enthusiasts alike. This event covers over three acres, and it showcases huge operating layouts, Legos, dozens of model train exhibitors, fun kids activities, and much more. There's free parking, and kids 12 and under get in free. Who won the Piston Cup in the movie Cars? What's the name of Nemo's dad? What intergalactic organization does Buzz Lightyear belong to? Hosted at Milepost Zero Food Hall at McGregor Square, prepare to put your Pixar knowledge to the ultimate test during their bi-weekly trivia contests. Seedlings classes offer a fun, hands-on way for young children to explore the plant world while developing an understanding and appreciation for plants and their importance. Discover what happens to a tree when it becomes a log on the forest floor. Winner of eight Tony Awards, including Best Musical, Spring Awakening is an alternative rock musical adaptation of Frank Weddigan's provocative 1891 play, performed by Family Theater, whose mission is to be a creative home for theater artists with disabilities. The Great American RV Show is the real dealer show. Meet factory representatives, manufacturers, and dealers from across the state. The 2023 show will have displays inside and outside the hall, seminars, and Kids' Day promotions to ensure a great family festive vibe. The University of Denver will host the 2023 NCAA Gymnastics Regionals. Don't miss your chance to watch this historic and record-breaking team in action. In a Colorado premiere, DGMC will be among the first choruses to present Disney Pride in concert. The concert draws inspiration from Disney's beloved catalog of songs from iconic films including The Little Mermaid, The Lion King, and Mary Poppins, to modern classics Coco, Zootopia, and Wreck-It Ralph, and the magical music of Disney Parks. And that's a quick look at what's happening in Denver this week.
This whole area, well, in fact, all over the Denver County itself, it's great. But the way I look at it myself is, you know, people have to have places to live, and do I miss the sun in the morning? Do I miss seeing it go down at night? Yes. But, you know, people still have to have places to live, and in some respects, it was an asset because it did get rid of some of the stuff that wasn't as nice, that helped your neighborhood down. And like Colfax, the difference, it made a difference to what, you know, it became, what it was and what it's became. So I've got plaques, and I've got, you know, all kind of, all the honors that I've got through the years. This is my wall of collections, recognition of your generous and outstanding commitment to our city. But it isn't the glory of a piece of paper. A paper can, a house can catch fire, or there's different things that can be destroyed. But the thing that you do within your area, that's there, that's can be seen, it can be an asset, not a detriment to the people that live in that area. Okay, this is, this now is what's happening with St. Anthony's now. That's me showing. To me, you don't look at your front door and think just that. You have to spread out with your mentality and care for others besides yourself. I want to be remembered of a person with respect, and I never say, well, you know what, I should get some pay for this. I've never got one cent for nothing. But the thing is, all I've ever asked is pictures. Pictures, it's life, it's life. You can do a lot of, a lot of, a lot of talk sometimes, and you can see, well, just one picture, and it tells a story. The memories I have within my mind and the poem and legacy I leave behind. I leave my love and memories to each of you. Now be sure to keep your pictures and memories to love mom, grandmother, and friends. My name is Nettie Moore, and I am Denver.
It's hard to explain how incredible the community was.
It's mainstay for African Americans because they couldn't move anywhere else.
And I think when you think about the history of Denver, or even the history of our country, it makes this neighborhood an extremely special neighborhood.
You know, I come here, it's like, I feel like Norm from Cheers. What I want to do is for other folks to feel that.
You would, you would feel good on the, on the points. That was where everything happened.
Five Points grew out of downtown Denver. As it continued to grow northeast, Capitol Hill was started and grew north on the northeast-west-south grid. So you have these two neighborhoods converge. In the 1890s, a trolley went down Welton Street, and one of the corners that it stopped at was 27th Street in Welton, 26th Avenue and Washington Street, and it created five corners at that intersection. And the trolley named that corner Five Points instead of putting the names of all the streets on the marquee, and the name stuck. A lot of people weren't happy with it because it was a neighborhood in New York City that didn't have a great reputation. The, the history in the neighborhood is that it's always been a multi-ethnic neighborhood. We've had churches and synagogues and people throughout the neighborhood from every corner of the planet. So you talk about Korean, or Japanese, Chinese, or Italian, French, Swedish, German, African American, from all different types of faith. The changes in the population, the demographic changes continue to change as we pass the turn of the century.
But in the 1920s, due to the, the rail car, this became an African-American historical neighborhood.
Probably 50% or more of the neighborhood became African-American, and a lot of black families moved into this neighborhood because the dads were working on the railroads. And so you had a lot of waiters and porters that lived in the neighborhood with their families. We also had a lot of industrial areas in town.
And so from the 20s, 30s, and 40s, it was bustling with businesses, bustling with, you know, residents, and that not only frequent Welton Street, but also the, the whole neighborhood.
I was born at 2323 Ogden Street in 1943. My dad worked for the railroad. He worked for DNRG. Like I said, I was just a little kid, but I remember him coming home with his Model T or Model A, whatever it was, and, and we would always be looking for him coming, you know, driving up to the house. He would always bring us a treat in his, in his lunch bucket that he, that he took to work.
You know, it's, it's mainstay for African Americans because they couldn't move anywhere else. Redlining was a big part of the history.
They drew a boundary around the neighborhood. The banks wouldn't cross, and other financial institutions wouldn't cross, so they wouldn't have to make any kind of investment. So if you were trying to buy a house, you couldn't get a loan from them, or there were issues with, with infrastructure.
The white people didn't, didn't allow you to go past, go past Gaylord. You, you, even if you had the money, you know, it was, it was very difficult. It was just the way it was. It just seemed to be a known fact.
That was a, a big part of why you had such a rich black population in Five Points and also the rich culture and heritage.
We had folks in the neighborhood that, that were pretty savvy with money and pretty innovative to create systems for our, our folks to gain resources.
And, and really, what was a driver in Five Points was musically, this was the place to be. You know, you had all your jazz greats as a genre of music had, you know, burgeoning in here in the United States. Some of those same folks that were a part of this, this, this genesis of jazz came here and stayed in Five Points.
But the jazz history in Five Points did create a national impact. We were called Harlem of the West. So you look at the stories that were happening in New York, and Chicago, and Los Angeles, and Denver, Colorado, and Kansas City. We were part of that big story.
Lou Gallantin, Billie Holiday, Cap Calloway, James Brown, Charlie Barrel, who was a, you know, who is still, you know, a huge part of Denver's music scene, and many of the others that were from Denver, and being able to, to play with some of these national acts. I mean, so we, we had it here.
You know, they knew this was a place to come out and hang out and celebrate this music and the food and all the restaurants and the shops down here. We had a really incredible history with that music. And folks that didn't live in the neighborhoods, some, some of the white folks came down in here and hung out, too.
So the Rissonian is really kind of the, the, the kind of flagship of Five Points, if you will. In its heyday, it was the place to be. It was the place that everyone went, especially the, you know, 30s, the 40s, 50s. It was the, you know, it was an upscale place where, you know, everyone would go.
My older brother would take me down to the Rissonian, and there was a room, there was a, the bar was there at the Rissonian, it was a V-shaped bar, but he would take me back in the back room, which you had to go up some stairs and go through a door, come down in, and that was where all, all the good stuff was going on.
And it had that, you know, cachet, you know, across the country for musicians to, yeah, you have to go play and stay at, at the Rissonian.
Some of the big bands would come, like James Brown and the Famous Flames.
But the nationally renowned folks coming in to our neighborhood that liked to hang out with our musicians, who were incredible at their craft, and really, really gave them a new level of what the artist is doing.
It was, it was, it was so fun. It was so much fun, and you felt the music, it just, the feeling, it just, it was, it was lively. I mean, as you can get from me, that I, I hung out a lot in the clubs.
Yeah, and, and so, you know, after the 60s, in mid, late 60s and 70s, and of course, you know, with, with the ability to go elsewhere, a lot of African Americans did leave, leave this neighborhood. And because the neighborhood was so rich with, you know, doctors and accountants and your lawyers, and sometimes some of those individuals left this neighborhood. And so you had a, a time of despair, especially in the late 60s, early 70s and 80s, and continued on to the early 2000s.
80s and 90s, especially the 90s, really made a big impact. I think it was a good intention to put the light rail here, but the side effects of the process was, was quite impactful. It really hurt some of the businesses when, during construction because you couldn't get access to them.
You know, you didn't have the consistency of some of the businesses and continuity of community, and you had economic despair, and many of the things that happened here in Five Points happened also across the country.
People were trying to get out of Five Points because it was a, a black community or, you know, and I, I would, I would never define Five Points as a ghetto, but people were trying to, to try to better yourself, you would move out of there and, and move But people were trying to try to better yourself, you would move out of there and move like what is now Park Hill.
Unfortunately, the neighborhood was deemed blighted by city council in 2012. That put a nail in the coffin of some of the businesses here too. That's the one thing I make sure I do is give respect to the folks that were here before we were here. And there wasn't a whole lot that was down here. Opening up in a revitalizing neighborhood that at that time in 2010, it was a neighborhood that had a negative connotation to it. And 2010 was the height of the economic downturn as well. I will describe how I see it now, which is a very inclusive, safe, dynamic, culturally-rich neighborhood. You know, we donate 97% of our space. We make sure that we make ourselves available to meet whatever needs our community asks. So I can tell you now, the conversation is, how do we continue to tell the stories about the history and the spaces that we're in right now? And while we develop other areas of this area.
Probably I get a smile on my face when I think about like my childhood. To describe running from 24th and Welton from my grandfather's liquor store to maybe 30th and Downing to go get a burrito from La Hacienda was the most magical thing for me. And I would run down Welton Street, you know, some of my grandfather's friends would, "Hey, little Harris, slow down." I program a lot of events and community celebrations here in Five Points. The biggest one is called Juneteenth Music Festival. It's a two-day celebration that happens down here in Five Points, which celebrates Juneteenth, attracts about 50,000 people. Another one is called the Five Points Jazz Festival. It's organized by Denver Arts and Venues, but my nonprofit also brings in all the vendors and helps with beverage execution. The festivals have been one of the, you know, integral parts of the cultural fabric of our neighborhood. Specifically with Juneteenth, it's been a part of the Five Points community over 50 years. You know, I sincerely believe that like music vibrates a little bit differently here in the neighborhood. Like these bricks have 100 years of, you know, rocking and rolling to some of, you know, some of the greatest musicians who have ever lived. For Juneteenth to be a part of that legacy is just amazing as well.
Right now, you get a mix of everything, right? You have a mix of different genres of music, expressing in Cervantes and the Roxy. So, but what I'm glad to see is that at least it's the continuity, that music is alive in Five Points. And we look forward to bringing more of that back to Five Points. I remember going in the Rissonian in 2000, but I always knew about the history of the Rissonian. And so that history was just always so, you know, not only just alluring and engaging. And so for me, I've been a part of dreaming about and having a vision for the Rissonian even since then. So that was almost 20 years ago. And so I work with, you know, the previous owner, Carl Boujois, on just visioning what the Rissonian could be. You know, I'm just glad to be a part of a group and a team to reinvest in the Rissonian and bringing the Rissonian back to life. And that's what's really exciting for me, and a project that's so meaningful, not only just for the Five Points community, the African-American community, but for the city of Denver. And so this will be the restaurant, the other side will be the kind of the lobby and so forth.
I think ultimately to finally see someone perform and to get a bite to eat and to maybe even stay in a room in the Rissonian is going to be amazing.
I've on and off been on this project for about 12 years. There has been a history to revitalize this place. And so we count it special, and that's why we, you know, take our time in doing what is right.
The challenge we have now is it's a double-edged sword. We've got a combination of gentrification in the neighborhood and still have redlining in the neighborhood. So this depends on who you are and where the resources are. So if you're gentrifying the neighborhood, you can get access to resources. If you've lived here for 50 years and you're trying, you still have a battle, an uphill battle.
I think we're right in our history. I want us to be in control of what that is. You know, the folks that were here and maybe got pushed out, the folks that are coming to as new people in this neighborhood, that we come together and have a combined vision of what it is and what it looks like. And I think that's what matters most.
This is a unique treasure Denver has in this historical district. It's only a historical district in Colorado. To be able to engage in, and you know, I think everyone should have a positive mindset of what the future is going to hold. I'm excited for Denver for having that and the leaders for, you know, putting this as important to not only preserving the history, but allowing the history to be in the present and as well as the future.
I love and appreciate the fact that this is such a polarizing neighborhood. What I mean by polarizing is the word gentrification is the big buzzword around here. And gentrification means different things to different people. But no matter who you are, somebody has an opinion about this neighborhood, where it's been and where it's going.
Everyone knew everybody. And I could probably rattle off all the neighbors right now, you know, that we lived with. And so far as growing up, I mean, for living down on the Five Points, I wouldn't trade it for anything. I would not trade it for anything.
You know, there's so many thousands of amazing stories to know. We just have, I just love being part of this community. I feel so honored to be a part of it and say that this is my history and these are my ancestors. You know, I think it's going to be pretty exciting. I think there's plans to develop the area north of us into this very vibrant retail, food and beverage entertainment space. We make sure that folks can see, can hear, can feel, and can smell, and can taste the story of what was here before.
You know, in our nation, of course, redlining created neighborhoods such as Five Points. And so, you know, despite that, you know, African-Americans and the black community really use it as a treasure instead of, you know, we can only be here, is even today, you know, we want to be here.
I mean, ask me why I'm passionate about Five Points is probably like asking a Denver Bronco fan, like, why are they passionate about, you know, about their home team? Like, this is my home team.
Listen, you're my friend.
I noticed you haven't really been yourself recently.
Yeah, I feel like something's up.
How are you?
Are you okay?
Is there anything you want to talk about?
I just want to know how you're feeling.
And listen, even if you don't know what to say, I'm here to talk.
No matter what you're going through.
I just want you to know I'm here.
I've got your back. When you want to talk, I'm here.
For thousands of years, the great prairie grasses covered much of the land from the Rockies to the Mississippi River. It was the largest ecosystem in America. Too dry for trees, too wet to be desert, and not much good for farming. But the land was teeming with grasses, wildlife, and people that lived in balance with each other. Tens of millions of bison roamed the plains. Many of the native people who lived here called the bison Tatanka. For the Lakota and Dakota people and others, Tatanka were the key to their survival. They used every part of the animal, the meat for food, and the hides for clothing and shelter, even the sinew for bowstrings. For the Native Americans, the bison were a gift from the great spirit. The great herds of bison disappeared with the white man's westward expansion. In the 1880s, hunters killed millions of bison and sold their hides for the warm buffalo robes that were popular back east and in Europe. Sportsmen killed thousands more for entertainment, sometimes shooting them from trains. Thirty-one million died between 1868 and 1881. By 1899, fewer than 1,100 survived. Just a few miles northeast of Denver, the bison are back. In the spring of 2007, a small herd of American bison were transported by truck from Montana to the Rocky Mountain Arsenal National Wildlife Refuge as part of a nationwide conservation effort. Although many bison in the United States have been crossbred with cattle, the bison at the arsenal have all been tested genetically and no cattle genes have been detected in their ancestry.
They adapted and evolved to live here and they lived through a lot of extremes, including droughts, periods of really heavy rain. They have adapted to fire, they've adapted to the heat. Even with those shaggy brown coats, they're very comfortable out here, at least from what we can tell.
On the 25 square miles of dry land that make up the refuge, farmers once tried to scratch out a living. After Pearl Harbor, the government acquired the land to make chemical weapons here during World War II and the Cold War. In the 50s, Shell Oil rented the facilities and manufactured agricultural chemicals. Over the decades of manufacturing, some of the land was polluted. The Army and Shell have worked hard to clean up the site. Together with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, they are restoring one of the nation's largest superfund sites to its original native short grass prairie. And they are bringing back the bison, taking the land full circle back to what it had been for thousands of years. Lee Plentiwolf and Bernard Cottonwood blessed the land and honored the bison. Bison have small legs and feet for their size, but they are very fast on their feet and can run as fast as a horse. Like all mammals, the females produce milk to feed their offspring. Both males and females have humps on their back. The humps are made up of a large bone plate and muscle to hold up their large, heavy heads. Bison like to wallow in the dirt or mud and rub themselves on trees, which helps spread soil and seeds. They graze differently than cattle. Bison prefer tender young grasses, and all of that influenced the land and plants growing on the Great Plains. Bison can tolerate extreme temperatures and go for long periods without water.
Historically, the Native Americans would, sometimes they would go for months, maybe even over a year, without seeing bison out on the Great Plains. And that's one way that bison were a dynamic factor of the ecosystem, is that they might be there and graze it all down right now, this spring, they may not be back for another year and a half.
One of the things about prairie is, is that all prairie evolved under a condition of disturbance. And a lot of that was either from one of two sources, either grazing by bison or by fire. Without that disturbance, what happens is, is you get invasives like cheat grass, which comes into the stand, and it can form mats so thick that it will actually outcompete the native grass. And behind me here is actually one of the natives that we have out here. This is needle and thread grass. A lot of the maintenance of this native grass is much like your lawnmower and the way you take care of your yard and a house. You mow it and you clip it every week, and when you do that, the grasses will naturally sucker out and become thick and become vigorous.
But the bison are far more selective than a lawnmower. A lawnmower cuts down everything in sight, while the bison will choose the shorter, tender prairie grasses to eat, which will make the short prairie grasses grow. In a few years when the bison have helped to restore this land, and perhaps 200 bison are out here, we'll be able to drive less than 10 miles from Denver. Back into time, back to what this land was like just 150 years ago, when Tatanka roamed free.
It is our tradition to give thanks, to give honor for those who came before us, to give thanks to know that we are here today because of something that someone did before we came. I am Opalanga Donna Jesse Pugh. I am Jessie, the daughter of Mary. Who is the daughter of Jessie? Who is the daughter of Mary? Who is the daughter of more Marys and more Jessys who came before them? I want to dedicate this program today to my ancestors whose shoulders I stand, who go back and back and back to first man and first woman and rocked the cradle of civilization and lived life that we can tell the stories. I want to dedicate this program today to my family, to my extended family, to my Five Points community in Denver, Colorado, for the love and for the support of my being here today. I want to dedicate this program to the Creator for having faith in me, to be keeper of the culture. Today, may there be a gift given, a lesson learned, a heart opened, and so it is. Ashay, ashay, ashay.
I want to be remembered as somebody who wants to make a change in somebody's life. My name is Thedora Ossefodjo. I was born in Ghana, grew up in Nigeria. My Ghanaian name is Adjoa, and I prefer to be called Adjoa. I want people, when they hear about Adjoa, they know that, oh, okay, that sounds a name that comes from a certain place in Africa. Being a G-... Being a Ghanaian, everybody has a local name. If you are born on Monday, you are Adjoa. Born on Tuesday, you are Bena. It follows that way. All my kids have a Ghanaian name. So although they don't speak the language, when they mention their name, everybody knows that, oh, okay. They come from somewhere in Africa or they come from Ghana. I arrived in this country almost 18 years ago. I came here with the notion that, oh, America is like heaven. It's like honey and everything is rosy. Till I got here and I realized in America you have to be documented before you can get a job. I never believed in being a handout, being a dependent on somebody, no. I always feel like I have to do something for myself. I have to push, no matter how it is. Back home, I did business administration. So I was a business administrator. But when I came here, because of the situation and the circumstances, I realized that, no, I have a God-given talent. I started cooking at the age of seven. And I also come from a tribe in Ghana, which is a frontier tribe. And if you come from a frontier tribe and you don't know how to cook, nobody recognizes you. So we started this restaurant in 2004. We have three beautiful kids. The oldest is Nana. The middle one is Mummy. And my son, which I always call him the President, which I believe is going to be a president one day, is on Henneba. When it comes to school, even to get a good school, you have to look at a zip code. So those are some of the things that I had to look before we make a move. And the kids were the most important thing because I always want my kids to do what I couldn't do. If you put in a child from when they're a child what you want them to grow up with, it becomes easier when they grow up. They know the expectation you are expecting from them. But if you don't put in them what you want them to be, if you don't set that example, if you don't give them that guidelines, and they grow up before you give them die guidelines, they become werewolf. And I would never say any of them about my kids because to me, my kids are unique. And I am proud of them. And it's because of them that is why I'm still fighting ahead and doing whatever I have to do. So my legends are elderly people. I grew up knowing that I was loved by elderly people, and they were always giving me the encouragement. I have these two elderly ladies back home, and I remember growing up, one of them used to tell me that "I brought you a rubber", which means I am going to be somebody, a lady who lives abroad one day. And the other one who tells me, "Hey, you're going to be somebody one day, so keep pushing." If you're a younger person and you associate yourself with elderly people, you're able to be informed. And if you're lucky, they will tell you if you're growing wrong, they will let you know. Or if there's a way out, they will give you the clues that this is a path that we think that if you take this path, this path is going to help you. Those are my legends, and I don't take them for granted.
A man and his son went on a long journey. The road was long, it was hot, it was hard. Sometimes they thirsted for water. Sometimes they wanted for food. Sometimes the rocks would hurt their feet. Sometimes they could barely identify the road, but it was always there. So as they approached the village of their destination, they went to sit down and take shade under the baobab tree. And just as they were about to sit down, the father noticed an old man and an old woman coming down the dusty road. He jumped up. He went to the old man and to the old woman. He said, "Ah, assante sana, assante sana imze." "Thank you, elder, for your assistance on our journey today." And the old man smiled, and the old woman nodded, and they walked down the dusty road. But when the father went to sit next to the son again, the son was confused. He said, "Ah, Baba, why is it you thank that old man and that old woman?" "Today, our journey was long, was hot, was hard. I thirsted for water. The rocks hurt my feet. And that old man and that old woman was not there to help us. Why do you thank them?" Father said, "Yes, son. It's true. Me too. I felt the heat. I felt the rocks. I felt the thirst." He said, "But child, did you notice the times when we could barely identify the road? It was always there." And the son said, "Yes, Baba." He said, "It was the feet of that man, the feet of that woman, and those like them, and those who came before them who created such a path." He said, "So remember, my child, and hold it in your heart, very dear. It's those who came before us that made it possible for us to be here."
How do we create a future in which both people and nature can thrive? This is the biggest question of our times. In the next few decades, we need to do something unprecedented: achieve a sustainable existence on Earth. But how do we do it? We can start by understanding how we got to this point. Twenty thousand years ago, humankind consisted of less than a million hunter-gatherers across the globe. We lived within the resources on offer, in balance with nature, a strategy that could theoretically last forever. But it wasn't an easy life. Nature determined our survival. We used our unique minds to challenge that reality. We learnt how to tame the wild, get more from the environment. Our population boomed, as did our demands. Every time a new problem arose, we solved it, altering Earth's entire surface in the process. And now, we have changed the world so profoundly, scientists have decided that Earth has entered a new phase of its existence. Welcome to the Anthropocene, the age of humans. The tables have turned. We now determine nature's survival. The planet is ours. There's just one problem. We're now totally out of balance with nature. And unless we get our balance back, this age of humans is due to be short-lived. So how do we deal with this problem? When you boil it down, there is one underlying big issue. Our planet is becoming less wild. Our species has cleared three trillion trees, cultivated half its fertile land, and now fishes across most of the ocean. In the last 50 years, the populations of wild animals have reduced by 60%. We've replaced them with ourselves and our domesticated animals and plants. Today, we and the animals we raise account for 96% of the mass of mammals and 70% of the birds on Earth. There's very little wild left. This biodiversity loss is not just a tragedy. It's the single biggest problem we face. Without biodiversity, the world as we know it doesn't work. Our planet needs its wild spaces. Every one is a component in the global machine. Only if they are all healthy can the planet run smoothly. A less wild world is less able to provide for our needs, less able to maintain dependable weather and seasons, less able to absorb our impact. Biodiversity equals stability, and stability is what we need most of all. Can we turn this situation around? Can we rewild the world? Well, maybe, due to one key change. As societies develop, something is happening that has never happened before. People are having fewer children. Globally, since the year 2000, the number of people under 16 years old has hardly changed. The main reason our population is still rising is because people are living longer. If this continues, our population may finally stop growing by the turn of the century. By investing in education and women's rights and raising people out of poverty, we could bring about peak human even sooner. This changes everything. It gives us the opportunity we need to regain our balance. The plan for our planet is remarkably simple: reduce our impact by making sure that everything we do, we can do forever. For the biggest gains, we could concentrate our efforts on four goals: phasing out fossil fuels and replacing them with renewables. This will not only slow the warming of the planet and the acidification of the ocean, but it will lead to clean air for all of us; upgrading to efficient food production; and reducing our consumption of meat. We'll require far less space to provide for ourselves, leaving more for grasslands; reducing deforestation and our demand for fresh water; and feeding more people with healthier, more affordable food; working together to properly manage our ocean; a global network of no-fish zones; and a treaty on the use of international waters would restore the health of the ocean so it actually produces more fish for us all to eat; working hard to keep hold of the wild populations we still have, encouraging nature wherever we can, in the ocean, on land we no longer need, and even in our cities. If we make these changes, we'll be a long way to becoming a species in balance with nature once again. We will have taken a remarkable journey: from a million people struggling to survive to several billion living long, healthy lives on a stable planet able to provide for all our needs. Only at that point will the Anthropocene, the age of humans, be truly underway. At that point, we will be proud to call it our planet. How do we create a future in which both people and nature can thrive? We open our eyes to this moment in history, think on a planetary scale, embrace the challenge we face, and do something we humans are very good at: change the world.
Everybody in life needs a purpose. Everybody in life wants to feel they contribute.
The folks in the disabilities community are chronically underemployed or unemployed.
ARC is one of the state's largest employers of people with intellectual disabilities.
Everyone at ARC has been so understanding of the things I'm going through and so helpful with the things I'm going through. And I love coming to work because of the people here.
It makes me feel like I'm contributing in some way.
So I'm the CEO of the ARC Thrift Stores, and I'm in my 14th year. And I got started in this because I had a little boy born in 2003 whose name is Kennedy. And Kennedy has Down syndrome. And when he was born, we didn't know he would have Down syndrome. And I didn't know much about Down syndrome. So when he was born, the delivery doctor came back into our room and said he had no good news to tell us about our son Kennedy. And I thought, maybe he died. So I asked him, you know, what he was talking about. He said, "Well, we suspect he has Down syndrome." And I asked him to tell me about Down syndrome because I didn't really know much about it. He said it was like mongoloidism. I banned him from the room. I got some nurses who had good information. It's the presence of an extra chromosome, chromosome 21. And kids with Down syndrome live at home with their families. They go to public schools. They sometimes work. And, you know, they spend time in their communities and with their families. And that's when my career in disabilities started. Probably the thing I'm most proud of at ARC is that I've now been fortunate enough to hire over 300 individuals with intellectual disabilities: Down syndrome, autism, cerebral palsy. And they work in all aspects of our company. They may accept donations from the public. They may unload donations in the back of our stores. They may sort donations, hang them, price them, tag them, run them out to the sales floor. But I believe half of our success is attributable to their contribution to our company. And they're just wonderful people to work with. They really enhance the morale of the company.
When I started here, I wasn't sure how it would work out. But, you know, on the job application, I always talk about this. It says, "Where do you want to end up?" I put "loss prevention", so I put "loss prevention". So I was at the store one day, and Karen Prieto and Gordon Bennett came in. And they're like, "Hey, we have an opening, and we're thinking about you." Awesome. So, "We'll see you on Monday." Awesome. So that's the way I went, and I've been happy ever since. I am one of two living treblets. The third passed away after nine weeks, I think, somewhere like that. I was born with hemiplegia, right-sided hemiplegia. And then that lasted until I've had it most of my life. And when I was ten, or so we assume, I was diagnosed with epilepsy. They didn't know why or anything like that. And then we took me to a neurologist, and he was like, "Oh, he's got epilepsy." And so I've been on medication ever since then. I'm a loss prevention agent. On Mondays, Tuesdays, I hang out with Dominic Rivera, who is in charge of the ARC Ambassador Program. Ambassadors are people who have special needs, which is the primary makeup of ARC. And our ambassadors are in each store.
Have a good time, enjoy your work, go home safely, go to bed at night and sleep soundly, get up fully rested, and get ready for the next day. That's what I think being safe is all about.
I am the Ambassador Relations Manager. And what that is, is I'm in charge of all of our social events and ARC University events that we have for the organization. So the Ambassador Program in ARC University was created in 2011. And our first class was on safety, I believe. It was just there to help our employees, our ambassadors, to practice safety and to be more safe in their environment. So most of our ambassadors are already aware of safety. But we all need reminders from time to time. So we usually have a safety class once a year, either on personal safety, or fire safety, or internet safety.
Should you have more expenses than income?
No.
All right.
So those classes, I think, help benefit them. It gives them the ability to ask questions that they may not otherwise ask in these institutions. Like if they go to the bank, they might be intimidated by the bank or the people there. And so these classes give them the opportunity to learn more. So Adam Horney, he is really into law enforcement. And it's kind of hard to get him to come to some of the classes sometimes because he tells me, "I've already done that." It's okay, well, you can come again. So whenever there's a personal safety class, or any class, or anything involving police officers, he's always on top of that and wants to be part of it. So it wasn't too hard to get him involved with that because there was police officers involved. So, yeah, when we attend these events, usually you have to dress up for these events. And so I tell them to dress nice, and they really like to dress nice. Just seeing them interact with people is really cool.
I've been working at ARC for three years. Sometimes I'm throw throwing clothes, and sometimes I'm working with jewelry. Autoimmune encephalitis. It's a brain injury that happens when you're three or four years old. I had problems eating, talking. I couldn't do anything at all. After I was in the hospital, I bounced back. Then I turned into Emily.
So Emily was very, very ill when she was three. And they had a really, really hard time getting a diagnosis. And then she got sick again when she was four. And they still didn't quite get a diagnosis. We didn't get a diagnosis until a couple of years ago. Because of better knowledge about the brain, we realized it was autoimmune encephalitis. Before Emily joined the ARC, we had a hard time finding peer groups for her. We had a hard time finding ways for her to hang out with people. She is always with people like me, you know, my friends. And now she's got a group, she's got a cause, she's got a job. It's... And happy Emily means that I'm happy. Life is very rewarding for her and me right now.
The University of Denver study, it was an economic impact study of the company on the state of Colorado. The total was $2.3 billion of economic impact over fifteen years. We had some big fingerprints on some of that, and it's a heck of a legacy. But it doesn't mean anything if the company doesn't continue. And we have to make sure that it stays on a firm foundation, and that's what paying it forward is all about. I saw a bumper sticker the other day that said, "Experience wildlife, raise twins." They have no idea. Jay was born in eighty-nine, Mark and Eric in ninety-two. It was interesting in that, you know, we had to adapt. Ultimately, they were both pretty much non-mobile. Mark was non-verbal, learned to talk with a speech computer like Stephen Hawking. We lost track of how many surgeries the kids had. It wasn't... And I'm not talking about wimpy stuff like tonsillectomies. I'm talking about spine fusions, bone and muscle lengthenings, stomach nissens, so forth and so on. The house was most definitely, almost looked like an intensive care ward. Mark unfortunately passed of a blood clot in 2014. He was twenty-one years old. Eric passed in 2015 of complications from sepsis or blood poisoning. There were over six hundred people at each memorial service, which is rather remarkable for kiddos who weren't particularly verbal or mobile. They touched an awful lot of people. And they were always tremendous self-advocates for the disabilities community. That many people coming to memorial services means that they were just well-connected to folks throughout their lives. In August of 2018, I hadn't been feeling particularly well for about a month. Just felt blah. I was having some minor balance issues. Went to a neighborhood picnic, and some of the neighbors suggested that I didn't look good. Suggested to Kelly, my wife, that I just didn't look great. I get up, and I'm getting ready for work, and she says, "You're going for an MRI." I said, "No, I gotta go to work." She says, "You're going for an MRI, deal with it." Whereupon the superhero known as She Who Must Be Obedied entered the room. And off we went in two separate vehicles. I determined that when they didn't find anything, I was gonna come to work. So we get to Littleton Hospital and sign in and get the MRI done. And an hour later, the attending physician comes down and says, "You have a large mass in your head. We're admitting you to the ICU." And naturally, I'm asking, "What exactly do you mean by a large mass? The brain's supposed to be in there." They wheel me down to surgery. And about six hours later, I was missing a racquetball-sized cancerous tumor, part of my brain. But I did get a cool scar. And they left most of the personality intact, which some view as a missed opportunity. I say you can't control what happens to you, but you can control how you respond to it. And that adversity is always less than opportunity, and that cancer does not know who it's messing with. And I think the positive mental attitude to the whole thing, it's right in line with the company. It's part of what I learned from ARC, but also have brought back with me and amplified, I think. What we do is about more than ourselves. It's about how do we help people? And how do we make a positive impact in the community and the world? And that's kind of my view of our story as well. It's not a particularly common story to... And I've had people tell me that it's sort of a bad, rough ticket, having Mark and Eric and then getting cancer. And I say, "You got it all wrong. Mark and Eric were a massive blessing. Kelly making me get the MRI was a blessing because absent that, we're probably not here having this pleasant conversation."
I'm from Texas originally. And due to some issues in my life, I didn't get along with my family very well. So one day, when I was twenty-one, I decided I'm just gonna get a one-way bus ticket, and I'm gonna see where the bus goes. And the bus came to Denver, and luckily, I liked it here. So I've stayed here ever since. I was initially diagnosed with Asperger's syndrome because of my awkwardness with people and kind of my social anxiety, and also some of my obsessiveness and anxiety that I have. We definitely know that I have sensory problems, which means that I just don't perceive the world quite like everybody else. But I do have some of the struggles of people on the spectrum because I find it difficult to relate to people sometimes. For about ten years of my life, I worked in healthcare. And it was... I had an identity. It was really good. I was really proud of what I did. And I developed a lot of physical and mental health problems. And one day, I had a really bad day.
Better. Thank you.
That concludes our general public comment session. The next session will be held on Monday, April 3rd. Senate begins at 11:00 a.m. on Friday, March 31st. We look forward to hearing from everyone again. Thank you for attending. Please stay with us for the Denver City Council meeting starting now. Council now reconvenes from our earlier session. There is no unfinished business. There are no proclamations being read this evening. We have two public hearings tonight. For those participating in person, when called upon, please come to the podium on the presentation monitor on the wall. You'll see your time counting down. For those participating virtually, when called upon, please wait until our meeting host promotes you to speaker when you are promoted. Please accept the promotion. Turn on your camera if you have one and your microphone. Excuse me. All speakers should begin their remarks by telling council your name and city of residence, and if you feel comfortable doing so, your home address. If you've signed up to answer questions only, please state your name and note you're available for questions of council. Speakers will have three minutes. Excuse me, there's no yielding of time. If translation is needed, you'll be given an additional three minutes for your comments to be interpreted. Speakers must stay on the topic of the hearing and direct your comments to council as a whole. Please refrain from profane or obscene speech and refrain from individual or personal attacks. Councilwoman Black, will you please put Council Bill 23-0215 on the floor for final passage?
I move that Council Bill 23-0215 be placed upon final consideration and do pass.
Thank you very much. Mr. Secretary, I see proclamations on our screen. Should that advance? Do we have the motions? Just a sec, folks. Okay, can I get new mover and seconder on this? Thank you very much. That's been moved and seconded. The required public hearing for Council Bill 23-0215 is open. May we have the staff report? Hi, Michael.
Good evening, council members. I am Michael Carrigan with the Department of Finance. Council Bill 23-0215 is an ordinance to approve the respective First Amendments to the service plans for each of the DeNargo Market Metropolitan Districts Number One through Three and Council District Nine. The districts are already organized and existing metropolitan districts. The original service plans were approved by City Council in March of 2010. The amended service plans are being submitted by two city councils for approval on behalf of the Board of Directors of the DeNargo Market Metropolitan District's Board of Directors, pursuant to the requirements of the Special District Act, CRS Sections 32-1-201, and more particularly, 32-1-204. The districts are located north of downtown, generally at the southeast corner of Arkins Court and 29th Street. When created, the district's original purpose was to facilitate the financing, construction, maintenance, and operation of public improvements associated with the DeNargo Market Development Project. The DeNargo Market Development Project is currently in the development stage and is approximately half-built out. DeNargo Market Metropolitan District Number Two includes the land that is currently built out and consists primarily of constructed residential apartment units. DeNargo Market Metropolitan District Number Three consists of the remaining undeveloped land within the DeNargo Market Metropolitan, within the DeNargo Market Development Project. And DeNargo Market Metropolitan District Number One is the management district for all three districts. The districts expend their funds on the typical district expenses like accounting, management, insurance, legal, debt repayment, maintenance, landscaping, capital expenditures, and utilities. The district's original service plans had a number of revenue limitations, including the debt mill levy cap of forty mils and operations and maintenance, or O and M, mill levy cap of ten mils, the combined debt and O and M mill levy cap of fifty mils, and a regional mill levy cap of ten mils. The original service plans also allowed those mill levies to be subject to galagerization. Additionally, the district's original service plans have a dollar limitation for the amount of debt that can be issued. As per the service plans, that limit is $22.6 million aggregated for all of the districts. In 2021, the developer that owns the undeveloped portion of the DeNargo Market Development Project processed a rezoning and received an approved amended and restated general development plan. The new zoning and GDP increased the development density for the project, which requires additional public infrastructure investments and greater operations and maintenance expenses. As part of the rezoning and amended GDP process, the developer additionally executed a previously approved development agreement with the city. That development agreement controls the infrastructure improvements, the parks and open space requirements, the transportation demand requirements, the environmental requirements, and the affordable housing requirements for the remaining portion of the project. Notably included in the development agreement are requirements for the developer to construct and require the metro districts to maintain extensive parks and open space improvements within the development site and adjacent to the site along the South Platte River. The service plan amendments before you tonight seek to align the service plans with the new changes approved in the amended GDP rezoning and development agreement. Service plan amendments include updated district description to be consistent with rezoned designations, updated population estimates from 6,000 people to just over 12,000, updated projected assessed value at build-out from just over $60 million to just over $207 million, updated projected build-out of the project from 2018 to 2029. Additionally, the service plan amendments include updated public infrastructure costs from the original estimated $22.6 million cost to approximately $68 million. The most notable portion of this change is due to increased costs for parks-related improvements. The original service plans included $850,000 for parks' costs. The amended plans include parks' costs of approximately $9.5 million. Those changes are primarily coming from the expanded scope of parks' investments. The amended service plans will also allow the districts to provide programming services with an explicit mention for farmers' markets. The amended service plans are increasing the O and M mill levy limit from ten mils to fifteen mils to help fund the additional programming and maintenance services. But the overall mill levy cap is remaining unchanged at fifty mils. So there will be no new additional mill levies. The updated service plan increases the debt capacity from $22.6 million to $142 million aggregated for all of the districts. This aligns with the district's proposed 2023 table election questions and is commensurate with the additional infrastructure costs borne by the districts. The amended service plans also contain an updated financing plan which aligns with current market assessment levels, new projected build-out for commercial and residential development, and updated debt issuance projections. Additionally, the amended service plan contains the standard disclosure notice from the city's model service plan that will be recorded on all properties in the district. Staff recommends approval of the First Amendments to the service plans for each of the respective DeNargo Market Metropolitan Districts Numbers One through Three. Representatives of the district and city staff are here tonight to respond to questions regarding this council bill. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have six individuals signed up to speak this evening. If you're here in person after your name is called, please make your way to the front bench. We will start with Paula Williams, joining us in chambers.
Good evening. My name is Paula Williams. My address is 450 Seventeenth Avenue, Denver. And I am here to answer any questions. I serve as general counsel to the districts.
I serve as general counsel to the districts.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, sent up in chambers, is Erica Montague.
Hello, good evening. I'm Erica Montague, also a general counsel for the district, here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jeffrey Jones.
Hi, Jeff Jones. I am a resident of Denver, District 1, and I'm here as a board member of the DeNargo Market Metropolitan District and here to answer questions as needed.
Great, thank you very much. Our next speaker, also in person, Laura Newman.
Hello, Laura Newman, also a resident of Denver and District 1, and here as a representative of the DeNargo Market Metro District Board. Happy to answer any questions as well.
Great, thank you very much. Our next speaker, joining us on Zoom, is Todd Winkowski.
Whoops. Hello, Todd Winkowski, 1301 Adam Street, Denver. I am also a board member. I'm here in support of the request this evening. I've been involved for the past 13 years and was involved with the original planning for the project and has not been fully realized yet. So I ask you all to kind of support this, to kind of allow the project to adjust to the current zoning and allow for the new amenities to come in place that are being proposed by the project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And our final speaker, joining us in chambers, is Robert Bailey.
I would like to talk a little bit about the debt here in Denver, Colorado, and I'm glad that we have people offer to answer questions. How much is the total debt for the city?
Mr. Bailey, please direct your questions to council.
Oh, okay.
For your comments.
All right. How much is our total debt? There's going to be a long three minutes. You want to answer?
Mr. Bailey.
You know the total debt, I hope. What is it? Go ahead.
Mr. Bailey.
Be bold, be brave. Actually answer a question. What's the debt? I know I'm so unreasonable. It's a very unreasonable question. Michael, is that your name? I think it is. I don't know. Are you going to answer this? No, you're just going to, you're just going to, you're going to say nothing. Nobody ever says anything about the debt.
Robert Bailey.
Nobody ever says anything about the debt. What a 100% appropriate question to ask right here. And since we had three people, two people stand up and say, we're here to answer questions, you think, would a council person like to ask, what's our total debt?
You have two minutes for comments, Mr. Bailey.
We can, we can stand here for two minutes? This is sad. This is sad. Amanda, would you like to ask what our total debt is? No? This is what we get from the city of Denver, from all the candidates. I don't know about all, but some of the candidates for mayor. No one talks about the debt. Would anybody like to talk about the debt? Such a reasonable question. Well, I went to chat. Chat has some answers. Chat said, at the airport, at the airport, about $6 billion. Somewhere between 2.7 billion and 4.9 billion. Not at the airport, depending on how you ask the question. Are there other categories of debt that you guys try to hide? Where chat, the world's largest AI program, cannot even figure out the total debt because they have it so hidden into different categories?
Are your comments about DeNargo Market, Mr. Bailey? That's what this hearing is for?
Well, it's about debt in general. Sure.
This hearing is for DeNargo Market.
Well, and it's about debt. Is that not an appropriate aspect of this hearing?
Public comment is just for this bill, which is about DeNargo Market exclusively. So proceed. You have 30 seconds.
Well, we need to get out of debt. The first step in this is to not take on more step or more debt. Financial people love that. They make a lot of money on this debt and then they don't talk about it. You know, I'll leave it at that. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bailey. That concludes our speakers. Are there questions from members of council on Council Bill 23-0215? Councilwoman Ortega?
Thanks, Madam President. Mike, I'll ask you first and then if you don't have the answer, I'll ask Jeff to come up. So the total amount of debt that can be issued is the $22.6 million, correct?
The current service plan.
Okay. And there's a remaining 9.8 that has not been tapped into and that's what would allow it to go up to the $22.6? Am I understanding that correctly?
So the current debt issued by the districts is 9.8 million? So 22.6 minus 9.8 is what?
What the difference is?
Right.
Okay.
Under the curve.
Okay. And that is specific to the site that's yet to be developed? Is that correct?
So that?
Or is that to be spread out across the different portions of the DeNargo Market district?
So that remaining capacity is for all three districts? So it could be for just the remaining piece or it could be for improvements for District Number 2?
Okay, so let me ask Jeff if you don't mind coming up. I think you might be the best person. So can you tell us what the additional capacity will be used for? Is it mostly infrastructure? Can you just talk about what kind of infrastructure you're talking about?
Yeah, absolutely. With zoning change that occurred as part of a GDP amendment, when was that? It occurred a year or two ago at this point. It significantly increased the intended density for this particular area. And with that came a development agreement, which required substantially more open space and other improvements to the area. And so the ask for the increased debt capacity support is to more broadly support those efforts. So that includes everything from a regional stormwater and retention facility to public open space and a new internal streets to support the parcels and future development that will occur there and things of that nature.
Okay. And then I'm going to go back to Mike for just a minute. If you don't mind, Michael. So for people watching, just to help them understand how the debt in a metro district works and how the debt gets paid off. If you can just elaborate on that a little bit to help the listening audience understand that.
Sure. So once the district issues debt, it will also typically come with a debt mill levy. The district will pledge that debt mill levy towards repayment of that debt. And then that debt mill levy ends up on the property tax bill in addition to sitting county of Denver taxes, DPS taxes, urban drainage and control, urban drainage and flood district taxes.
So if you live in or buy something within a metro district, that's where you see the extra taxes that are laid out on your bill when you go purchase something or if you live within one of those districts, whether you're a commercial landowner or a residential landowner?
Correct, yep. It shows up on those property taxes for the people within the boundaries of the district.
And it's only the people that live within those boundaries or work within those boundaries own property? So residential, commercial are the ones paying that tax besides people who then buy within those boundaries, correct?
Yeah, so people who buy would end up being property owners. So then subsequent, in subsequent years, they would end up paying those.
So the rest of Denver is not paying those costs. It's the development that, where that revenue gets generated from, that is then paying off the debt on the bonds.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Sandoval?
Thank you. Can someone from the metro district come up and answer a few questions? I'm not going to figure out who the best subject matter expert is, so you two can just figure it out. So in the presentation, it talks about including the rezoning and population estimates have gone up. Can you give more specificity? Can you talk about the zoning you had, the zoning it went to, the population estimates you had, and now what you're assessing? Does that make sense?
Yes, good question. So originally, the land that we purchased in 2019 was a mixture of RMU 30, which allowed for primarily low-rise residential development with some supportive commercial uses. And another piece that we bought was industrial use zoning. And through the rezonings in 2021, we rezoned to CMX 8 through 20. We did that rezoning because it ultimately honored the spirit of the original DeNargo Market Design Series of Guidelines, where identified it as a place of more density and mixed-use development. So now it allows for obviously increased density, which translates into more buildable gross square footage, more people, but also allows for more mixed uses. So not just more residential, but we're planning commercial hospitality, significant amount of retail on the ground floor in addition to all of the parks and the open spaces that we are building as part of the first phase of the project.
Can you, are you selling any of it? So you're saying more residential? Are you going to have for-sale condos and for the retail? Will you be selling any of the retail space? Or will you be the owner and the predominant payer back of the metro district? Because if you own land, you pay back the metro district.
Yes, so we as the master developer are going, we're going to advance the funds to get this project going, hopefully this summer, so that the people in the current neighborhood and all of Denver can start enjoying the parks and the riverfront improvements and all the things that we're putting in. We will develop probably a big portion of it. It's 11 development pads, so it will be phased over time. In terms of what the zoning allows for, it allows for for-rent and for-sale on the residential side. So it allows for some flexibility based upon market conditions. But the exact number of for-sale versus for-rent is unknown at this time.
Okay. And I had one other question, but I have to. Oh, can you talk to me? It says that you executed a development agreement with the city, which controlled the infrastructure improvements. When was that executed? And can you talk with as much specificity as possible, the improvements to the parks that you will be bringing?
So it was executed in 2021, just along with, when we did the rezoning, the development agreement came with the rezoning. We had negotiated that and it all became official in 2021. And so the development agreement governs not only the infrastructure improvements that have to be put in for the entire district, storm, storm water management, water quality, obviously streets, curb, gutter, et cetera, but in all of the dry and wet utilities, but also, and the environmental remediation, because this is a former landfill site. At least it's been that way for the past probably 15 years, if not more. So all of that is governed in the development agreement. And then as it relates to the open spaces, development agreement just specifies how much open space that we should have. But as part of the agreement and the discussions that we had with the city and specifically parks and rec, given that the master developer is responsible for improving some of the city-owned land along the South Platte, we did discuss the elements that we all wanted to see. So a playground, a community garden, sport courts, a dog park, extension of the Rhino Promenade that will connect eventually out to the north that the city's, that the city's working on. Plazas that can be programmed, as Michael said, with farmers' markets and the green lawn that could be programmed with yoga on the park and movie on the park. All publicly accessible, of course. Residents and workers within the district will have that at their fingertips, but this is meant to be a place for all of Denver to enjoy.
Okay. And then within your development agreement, it usually determines how much affordable housing you have. Refresh my memory, 2021 feels like forever ago. Refresh my memory how much affordable housing that you are doing within your development agreements.
Good question. So our development agreement was entered into before the new EHA policy took effect. So we are, we've got 15% of any market rate or any building that gets built that's residential has to be income restricted. 15% of those units have to be income restricted to those earning 80% AMI or less, of which of those units, 25% of those have to be income restricted to 60% or less. And as part of our development agreement, another, another component that we had that we're actually executing on right now is that we agreed to donate a half an acre parcel within our assemblage to an affordable developer that is actually, she just broke ground and she's going to start building 56 units that are actually serving 30% to 50% AMI. And that's the first project that's beginning at DeNargo Market right now.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Sawyer?
Thanks, Madam President. Thank you. And I asked these questions when you guys were at committee, but just want to make sure that they are on the record as well. So this metro district was approved in 2010. So today, you're coming back to add additional mills or just add bond capacity?
So we're adding bonding capacity. We are not increasing the mill cap.
Okay.
We're just re-shift.
Just shifting it around. So like somewhere in the legal documents. It says, yeah, like it says like that it needs to be done a certain way as long as it's capped at 50 mils.
Exactly.
So this just allows you to shift that.
Exactly.
Okay, great. Appreciate that. And so, and the reason for that need and shift is the rezoning and the added density to it? And also the cost is that also including the cost of like inflation that we have seen since 2010?
Yes, correct.
Okay, so all of, so there's, it's essentially, is it fair to say the same thing, but just sort of reflecting those additional, the additional needs based on the additional costs due to the rezoning?
Yes, that's accurate. That's an accurate statement.
Okay, great. Appreciate that. And so the biggest thing we hear, right? Because metro districts are managed on a state level. So the biggest thing we hear as city council members who have zero control over how metro districts are run is concern about how metro districts are run. So can you please just kind of walk through for me the effect that this will have on a buyer or a person paying property taxes in this metro district in the future?
Yeah, that's a great question. I'd like to bring up Jeff Jones, fellow board member, to answer the question.
Awesome, thank you.
Hi, thank you once again. To answer your question, I think a way to look at it is, as it currently stands, a typical property tax in the area would be roughly 80 mils, expanding from 78 to 84, generally speaking. The metro district independently adds an additional 50 mils as a cap to that. That's what the cap has been and will continue to be. The ultimately, what we're, the real primary driver of being here in the first place is, as you know, to increase the bonding capacity, ultimately to support the additional infrastructure efforts that will come into place again and associated with this increased density and all the rest that comes with it. And so from that perspective, the mill levy itself isn't changing. That's consistent as it always has been. But by allowing the debt capacity to increase, that allows us to actually support the improvements that are part of the initial vision and was part of that density increase and everything that comes with it. So that was the real intent. Now, the only other shift is, as we were just alluding to, is how you're shifting, how that mill levy is handled or used. And as it was stood previously, 40 mils were dedicated to the debt repayment, 10 mils for operations and maintenance. In this case, we've actually shifted that slightly to allow that operational mill levy to increase from 10 to 15 mils, again while maintaining that 50-mil cap. And the reason is simply because of the scale of the improvements, we wanted to ensure that there was ample operation and maintenance funds to be able to maintain this over the long term.
Okay, that's fantastic. Really appreciate you breaking that down for me in a way that is very easily understandable. Thanks very much. Thanks, Madam President.
Thank you. Councilman Cash?
Thank you, Jeff. You can probably return to the, I was trying to catch you before.
Sorry. Didn't mean to walk away here. Yes.
Two things, just to clarify what I heard the previous speaker say regarding affordable housing, that it was 15.15% of the units would be affordable?
That is correct, yes.
Very good.
15.15.
Great. So what I'm trying to put my mind around in general is what these dollars mean to whoever takes up residence, does business on this area? So you have three districts. The total revenue cap is 24 million?
It's 22.6 million.
22.6 million. So as I understand it, you're going to have around 12,000 units total of residential?
The projected residency upon full build-out is roughly 12,000 people.
Okay.
Either?
So maybe about half or two-thirds of those, 6,000 to 8,000 units? So maybe about half or two-thirds of those, six to eight thousand units?
I, I, not quite that many, I think. The current development plan for the remaining developable area, it's projected to be somewhere in the ballpark of anywhere from fourteen hundred to two thousand residential units being added beyond.
I'm looking for the total units under that twenty-two point whatever million.
Do we know the current?
Ballpark is.
Yeah, there's, the, the district is thirty-four acres in total, of which there's only thirteen remaining to be developed. So I apologize, I'm just checking to see if we have that count, because there are several existing buildings within the district as it currently stands. I just don't know, happen to know the unit count currently, I apologize. It's, oh, yeah, it's over a thousand, it's over a thousand, but I don't know the exact count.
Yeah, I don't think we're getting where I want to go. I'm trying to figure out, to make the math easy, how many units are we dividing? And I know there's going to be commercial resident, retail, whatever on the site as well. We're trying to figure out, is each, is the price of each unit going to absorb another thirty thousand dollars per unit? Two thousand dollars per unit? Where, where are we going? Trying to just understand the effect of what we're talking about.
Uh, sure, I, well, I guess one, I'm going to rephrase this slightly. You can tell me if this is off base from where you're trying to go. But again, if you kind of look at the existing mill levy for the area, in areas without, in the immediate, call it River North District more broadly, property taxes for multifamily units tend to be around two thousand dollars per unit. In the district, because of the additional mills associated with the existing bonding, which is currently being levied at forty-six mils out of the, out of the fifty mil cap, adds roughly another a thousand to twelve hundred dollars per unit as a result. So in the district, those units pay roughly a thousand to twelve hundred dollars more than they would if they were not in the district.
That answers my question, thank you, Jeff. Thanks for making it understand.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Sadebaka online.
Thank you. I'm actually curious, okay? Because we keep saying that this is not doing anything different, but we're more than doubling the allowable debt. We're just agreeing to not change the payment or the cap, the mill cap. Is that correct?
Yes, that is accurate.
Okay, so we're more than doubling the allowable debt. If this were not to pass tonight, how would you, would you guys move forward? How would you move forward without the increased debt?
What that would mean, I think practically speaking, is that if the debt capacity were not increased, that would make it incredibly challenging to move forward with the promised infrastructure improvements that were intended as part of the rezoning effort. That would not change the fact that there is a district in place as it currently stands. And that mill levy increase that's associated with the district, as I mentioned, is currently running at forty-six mils out of the fifty mil cap. So it wouldn't change anything really for the existing residents, but it would ultimately prevent us from moving forward with the intended infrastructure improvements in the area.
So let me get this straight. You guys entered into a development agreement based on increased density and increased amenities, but did not have the funding to deliver that?
I wouldn't say that's wholly accurate, but I think it's particularly given today's current environment, it's very difficult to be able to support the costs associated with that, those infrastructure improvements without the support of the metro district.
But you're asking for more than double the allowable debt. So you all made a promise to the city and the residents of Denver via a development agreement that you would deliver X, Y, and Z if you got X zoning. You got X zoning, but never had what it takes to deliver on that promise. So now you're back asking us to increase your allowable debt, telling us that it, nothing is changing, but if we did not pass this tonight, you would probably not be able to deliver on those promises.
I appreciate your train of thought. I, I would say that, again, in this current environment, it would be difficult to move forward, at least at the pace we would like, where we're front-loading the cost of the infrastructure improvements into the community, which is ultimately a public benefit, at least at the same pace without that support in hand. So it's not to say that it wouldn't be done, and it does not change, the development agreement is a development agreement. Affordable units are required regardless, so any new development occur, that occurs will adhere to that. And ultimately, over the course of time, one way or another, the public improvements will be delivered. And so I, I would simply say that I don't know that it's accurate to state that we weren't prepared to move any for, to move forward in any form or fashion. But it would be a challenge without that additional support.
Thank you for answering that question. And for anyone who is viewing this, I'm sure my colleagues will pass this tonight. But this should be a lesson to the viewers and to anyone who is really tuning into where we are allowing metro districts and how this works. You can essentially have a developer make all the promises in the world to you and not be able to deliver on those promises with what they're currently allowed and still have the ability to come back to us and double the amount of debt that they're allowed from the city. That never happens in an individual's transaction. You never ever see that when someone goes to buy a house. That doesn't work for an individual, but we're doing it for developers. And I just hope that you all are paying attention to where else we're asking you to do this. Thank you, that's it for my questions.
Thank you, Councilwoman Sawyer.
Thanks, backup. Councilwoman Sadebaka's comments, just, I, I need a little clarification based on some of the things that she just commented on. So the reason that you are coming back for this, in twenty twenty-one, we were still coming out of COVID, had in, like the inflation, the cost of materials, the cost of labor, all of those different things, had that uptick started yet when we approved that development agreement?
Not nearly to the scale that we've seen it over the last couple of years. So since twenty nineteen, when we initially budgeted this project, since then, overall costs for these improvements have increased by roughly thirty to thirty-five percent just in that timeframe alone. And that's just market-driven for the same work.
Okay, appreciate that. So, and, um, the, the numbers that were originally approved were, were approved in two thousand and ten?
That's correct, I believe. That's, yes, that's accurate.
Two thousand and ten, okay.
Correct.
Um, okay, appreciate that. Just wanted to make sure I kind of wrapped my mind around the timing of what we were looking at here. And then, um, asking for a little more clarification, you said something along the lines of you would still build out what you promised to build out, even if we did not approve this tonight, but it would take longer? Can you explain, is that correct?
I just think it's a, yeah, I guess where I was going with that is, is that it would challenge the desire of, of anybody to move forward and invest substantial capital required to do this if there is not an ability to ultimately recover that, those funds at some point down in the future. Because again, I think it's important to note that the way this works is, is not as though a check is being cut to the development group upfront. It is all predicated on future development and future tax flow streams that allow ultimately a bond to be placed, which becomes the debt that is then repaid by the district. And in order for that to occur, there has to be assessed value in place. Meaning first, the development comes, then the repayment via the bonds comes later at a future point in time, once those buildings are operational and are able to support the bonds that would be put in place.
Okay, so thank you for clarifying that for me, I really appreciate it. And, um, just want to make sure that I'm understanding, because everything that you just explained has nothing to do with city council or anything that we manage. That is a, am I understanding correctly? That is the way the financing market.
That's just purely the financing, that's correct.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're referring to the why it might slow down, and my point was simply that.
Yeah, no, that's great. I just want to make sure that I am, am very clear, based on Councilwoman Sadebaka's comments earlier, that I, you know, before I vote yes or no on this, I want to make sure I'm, I'm understanding that part of the criticism and her concerns that she was voicing are the way the free market economy and financing works.
I would say that's definitely true.
Okay, great, thank you, thanks, Madam President.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Sandoval.
Thank you. For our finance department, I have a question for you, Michael. In your experience, how often is it that metro districts come back for a, a updated service plan? And does this happen frequently? Does this happen unfrequently, just in your experience? And you don't have to go back to the test time, I mean, that's ridiculous. But just how often does this happen for viewers? If we're setting the record straight, because people might say this happens all the time.
It's just a handful of times, you know, maybe one to two times per year.
And what drives the reasons for, in your experience as the finance department? What drives the reasons for those one or two times a year? What are you seeing on your side of bringing these forward to city council?
Yeah, it's, it's usually a, you know, fundamental shift in the development plan or it's really old service plans being amended to more, uh, more current realities. So for instance, at SPYMed, which we took through a couple of weeks or a couple of months ago, they had a, you know, fundamental kind of shift in, in the makeup of their residents of the district, and they needed a, a whole new power for them to be able to fund parks and rec services. And then, for instance, here with the Nargo Market, very old service plan being updated now to, to, to new realities of the, of the development.
Thank you, and one last question. Who sets, how do metropolitan districts get set? Is it state statute or is it our statute? Or how do they, talk to me about the mechanisms of a metro district?
Can you clarify your question a little bit?
So does, if this, the state law impact how metro districts, like any metro districts, could the state set different requirements on metro districts?
Yeah, yeah, so the state kind of sets the, those thirty thousand foot requirements about what metro districts can do, how they can operate, what services they can provide. And then they leave it up to the cities to add additional requirements via service planes.
And then to get them granted, that goes through a whole voting process, correct?
So is that?
A voting process, does a metro district go to the landowners for a vote?
Uh, to, to create the district, you, service, the service plan is created by council. And then after that, it goes to a district court. And then district court orders it, district court, or is it to be put onto the election ballot? And then the electors vote for it to be organized, they vote for the board of directors, and then any additional taper questions or any other questions that, that need to happen.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ortega.
Thanks, I'd like to ask Jeff to come back up for a minute, please. So the questions from Councilwoman Sawyer talked a little bit about supply chain issues. Can you tell us what the interest rate was back when, in twenty-ten, when this was, was it twenty-ten?
It was twenty-ten, when that was originally, when the district was originally formed. And, uh, yeah, that, the development group that currently has control took control in twenty-nineteen, well after this was placed.
And in nineteen, what were those interest rates?
In twenty-nineteen, next to zero, I, at least, yeah, I mean, the, the federal reserve rate was next to zero. So the, the actual rate on the bond that we have in place, I think, was two point seven five percent, if I'm not mistaken.
And the rates are now roughly about?
That, that could be a little bit off, but I, I think it's pretty close.
What are, what are the rates that you're looking at now?
Uh, well, we've talked to a bond placement agent fairly recently, and, and I think the going rate at the moment is somewhere between anywhere from five and a half to seven percent.
So that's a huge jump from.
It is substantially more costly, yes, given today's environment.
All right, and I can remember it was not too long ago, we had a transportation metro district that was near the tech center area that we were asked to do a revision or expansion that allowed them to do ballfields. So that was an example of a different metro district that wasn't focused on residential, but more on transportation issues. Lastly, I just wanted to ask a question, and I think it was you that talked about the eighty mils and then the fifty mils for, up to the fifty for the service. So tell me the difference between the eighty mils and the thirty mils.
Yeah, just in the general neighborhood, the, as a rule, the property tax is generally run between roughly seventy-six or seventy-eight, up to eighty-four mils. There are some differences, primarily because there is a bid and a get, a business improvement in the district and a general improvement district that each could tack on, depending on the specific location, up to four mils each. The, so that is just a, a city property tax.
And that's the accumulation of all of it. It's not a separate eighty and a separate fifty.
It is, well, no, it's, these are, so the, the property tax levied by the city is roughly eighty mils. And then in addition to that, the metro district has the ability to levy up to an additional fifty mils, again, specific to property owned and, and within the district.
Right. Michael, you want to add something here?
Just one clarification on that eighty, that's broken up between three primary taxing entities. It's the City County of Denver, DPS, and Urban Drainage.
Yep, got it. Okay, thanks so much, that's all I had.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Sadebaka.
No further questions.
All right. All right, seeing no one else in queue, this public hearing is closed. Comments by members of council on Council Bill twenty-three dash zero two one five? Councilwoman Sadebaka, I'll go to you first.
Thank you, I just want to highlight that Mr. Kerrigan mentioned that this happens maybe once a year. I've been on council for four years and we've never done this before. So I would say that it's even less common than once a year. And I do think that we should not be approving this tonight. A good plan, a good developer recognizes that market conditions change over time and that with a project of this size, there was no way that they were going to finish it within a short period of time. And so they should have anticipated these cost increases. And I think it's their responsibility to go out to their investors and find the money to front-load the debt. I don't think it should be the city having to deliver, having to be able to make the debt available to deliver on promises, over promises that they made to us in order to get substantial upzoning. If they could not have afforded this at the time, which they would have known, because it was post-COVID, they should not have sought the extra zoning, knowing that they were going to have to come back to the drawing board. So for those reasons, tonight, I do not support this change.
Thank you very much. Seeing no one else in queue, Mr. Secretary Roll Call on Council Bill twenty-three dash zero two one five.
Sadebaka?
No.
Herndon? Herndon? Black?
Aye.
Lynn?
Aye.
Gilmore?
Aye.
Heinz?
Aye.
Cashman?
Aye.
Ortega? San, Sandoval?
Aye.
Sawyer? Madam President.
Aye. Mr. Secretary, close the voting and announce the results.
One nay, ten, I'm sorry, one nay, ten ayes.
Ten ayes, Council Bill twenty-three dash zero two one five has passed. Councilwoman Black, will you please put Council Bill twenty-three dash zero one eight six on the floor for final passage?
Yes, I move that Council Bill twenty-three dash zero one eight six be placed upon final consideration and be passed.
Thank you, and that's been moved and seconded. The required public hearing, excuse me, the courtesy public hearing for Council Bill twenty-three dash zero one eight six is open. May we have the staff report, community planning and development?
Good evening, council. My name is Portland Heiser. I'm the neighborhood planning supervisor in community planning and development, here tonight to present our staff report for the West Area Plan. Can you see the presentation?
No.
Not yet.
Not yet.
I don't know if I need to do something.
Nope, here we go.
You can see it now?
Yes.
Okay. I'm joined tonight by the rest of the West Area Planning Team. I'll be giving the presentation, but they'll be available to help answer your questions. Specifically Fernando Booth and Chelsea. So tonight's presentation have a couple of main topics that we want to cover. The first is we'll give a quick overview of the plan structure, how it's put together, the content of it, how it's different or innovative compared to neighborhood planning initiative plans that have come before it. And then the second main topic we'll be addressing will be the review criteria that city council uses to evaluate plans that are being considered for adoption. So the first topic is plan overview. So the West Area Plan is part of the Neighborhood Planning Initiative. This is the city's program for conducting neighborhood planning within the city and county of Denver. This MPI plan covers six neighborhoods. There are Barnum, Barnum West, Bel Verde, Villa Park, Sun Valley, and West Colfax. And this planning area spans portions of three city council districts. The bulk of the area is in Council District Three, but it also includes portions of Council District One and Seven. This is a graphic representation of the table of contents for the plan. Highlighted in the red box, you see the core chapters. Those are the area-wide recommendations and topics that are addressed by the West Area Plan. This is really the meat of the plan: quality of life, mobility, land use and built form, and economy and housing. Throughout this planning process, one of the things that we heard loud and clear was that quality of life was a driving consideration for the community. And they really wanted to see quality of life central to the plan and elevated as a core topic. Because ultimately, everything else that's in a plan affects quality of life. And so that positioning was important. So we'd not only put that core chapter first among the area-wide recommendations, but also applied a quality of life lens to all of the other topics that the plan addresses. And I'll have a little bit more detail on that in the next slide. But in addition to these core area-wide chapters, the plan also includes transformative projects, neighborhood-specific chapters. So each of the six neighborhoods within the West Planning Area has its own chapter and recommendations that are specific to it. And there's also an implementation chapter. Here's an example of how quality of life gets woven throughout the plan. These are just a few examples. It's not every instance of how we did this, but just to help you understand how this was accomplished. In the mobility section, we included content about quality of life benefits associated with making it easier for people to use transit, bikeways, walk around. Those have positive air quality impacts. In the economy section, we highlighted Denver's green workforce development strategy. Or in the land use chapter, provided information about Denver's green building work. In addition to centering quality of life, there are a couple of other innovations that I wanted to highlight from the West Area Plan. And these were created as well in response to community input that we heard throughout the planning process. So this is the first MPI plan to have a water section. We included that after hearing how important that topic was to the community, the need to dive deeper into environmental issues, and especially water. The section focuses on existing conditions, how they affect the West Area, and includes recommendations for sustainable water management. This is also the first MPI plan to include a section on historic injustices and present-day inequities. We have, ever since Blueprint Denver, plans have addressed equity as a core topic. But it's always been looking at the present condition and then recommendations for helping to improve that looking forward. What's new about the West Area Plan is that we also look back in time to identify some of the root causes for the existing condition. And so the way that that's largely accomplished is through this historic timeline approach. This timeline includes major milestones in West and Denver's development. It highlights both successes and past injustices. Past harms inform many of the recommendations included in the plan. And I'll give a few examples of those. So the history of redlining the community informed recommendations for increased homeownership and affordable housing. Pollution from a history of industrialization is another important topic. As I mentioned already, we integrated health considerations related to quality of life throughout the plan. And then past development, in some instances, left what the West Area physically disconnected from downtown, other areas, barriers such as Sixth Ave or the South Platte River. And we do have some recommendations in the mobility section that help to improve that connectivity. So that was the quick overview of the plan. Now, the second topic I'll be addressing is the review criteria. Before I get into that, wanted to mention that Planning Board held its public hearing on February 15 and voted to approve the West Area Plan with a nine-to-zero vote. There were 12 speakers at the public hearing. The planning board uses the same review criteria that city council does in evaluating neighborhood plans. There are three of them: an inclusive community process, consistency with Comp Plan 2040, and that the plan demonstrates an appropriate long-term perspective. And I'll go through each of those three items now. This content also tracks directly with the staff report that you received in your packet, that you can look there for all the detail that I'll just be summarizing here. So the first criteria of an inclusive public process, this graphic summarizes the West Area Plan's timeline. This got started in the fall of 2019, so it pre-pandemic. But then, of course, the pandemic hit in the spring of 2020. That affected the ability for people to gather in person for a couple of years after that, which ended up being really the core of this three-year planning process. Two of those years, we had restrictions at various levels affecting our ability to gather in public. And so what you will see in the next slide, a summary of community engagement efforts, it required a real pivot to adjust to those restrictions and still carry out a public process, a pivot to online and virtual engagement efforts. So these are the main categories of engagement. There's a lot more detail in the staff report on each of these. This is just a summary level. But the main categories were workshops and major online events. We did have three in-person, community-wide workshops, you know, in school auditoriums and gymnasiums. Two of them were in the before time for the pandemic. Then we were able to hold another one, most recently this fall, when we put the draft plan out for review. And in between, while the COVID restrictions were in effect, we tried several different things, you know, focusing on online engagement tools. So we had an online open house. There was an online webinar. We've had much heavier reliance on online survey tools and boosted our ability to do online review drafts with the community. So we had three pretty robust online surveys that we conducted in those middle two years. And then also with our public review, historically, we would just make the PDF available and have people submit comments. We invested in a new tool called Conveyo that allows people to comment on the plan interactively, see what other people are saying, respond to their comments. We think it's a much, much better way, not just to overcome pandemic restrictions, but moving forward. We want to continue to use tools like that. It's a much more dynamic experience for the public in reviewing drafts. The next big category is community meetings. These were meetings where staff worked to get on the agendas of other groups that are already meeting, so registered neighborhood organizations or other community groups. Also, participating in community events, oftentimes held outside in a park or something in partnership with other city agencies. We offered office hours at strategic points in the planning process, usually in conjunction with when we had a survey available or were actively seeking input from the public on draft material or a public review draft. We did 30 virtual sessions and five in-person ones. And then we had a very dedicated steering committee as part of this planning process. They met monthly for three years, 36 meetings total. And actually, a subcommittee of that group met weekly for a couple of hours every week over the summer to help us refine the draft. This is a list of the community groups that we met with, many of them several times throughout the planning process. And I just wanted to draw attention also to partnerships that we had in this planning process with the West Denver Renaissance Collaborative and also Colorado Jobs with Justice. More than just meeting with them and seeking their input, we had more of a partnership, especially with regards to community engagement and our survey. There were two draft plans that were put out for review. The first draft was last spring. And that was the draft that we worked with the steering committee subgroup to help refine over the summer. We had that draft open for about five months, from May to October. And then later in October, just around Halloween, released a second review draft that incorporated edits from our steering committee working group, as well as the comments that we had received from public review draft number one. Draft two was one where we did a full communications push in support of it, had public meetings, office hours, and all of our engagement activities. Across the two drafts, we had hundreds of comments and thousands of views. This summarizes the communication tools that we used to solicit participation throughout the planning process. The main ones are email newsletters. We had an opt-in subscription-based newsletter. Over the course of the plan, we eventually got over 1,300 people signed up for that. We sent emails to help support engagement opportunities, review draft availability. Reach refers to the number of people who either opened an email or saw a social media post. And so for social media, the main tools were Twitter, Nextdoor. We also use Facebook, but didn't have a project specific. We use the city's general Facebook account for that, so don't have the specific statistics to report for Facebook. But for Twitter and Nextdoor, the reach gets into the tens of thousands in terms of people who actually saw what was posted there. Beyond that, earned media, that's just news coverage. We had two stories in the Denver North Star and another two in the Denver Right Blog. And we do make an effort to make all of our engagement events as inclusive as we can. And so that includes offering Spanish language interpretation, food and childcare at all of our community workshops, flying bilingually in English and Spanish when there are opportunities to attend a workshop or review a draft. Door-to-door flying was done for the first review draft last spring. We partnered with council offices to distribute close to 10,000 flyers within the community. And then all of our electronic communication web materials, they're ADA accessible and displayed correctly on a phone or a tablet. So they don't require you to have a PC. And beyond that, print copies of materials and additional language services beyond Spanish are available upon request. So with respect to the first criteria of conducting an inclusive community process, the finding is that the West Area Plan was developed through an inclusive process. The second criteria is plan consistency. The staff report has a lot of content here on the specific points of consistency and the text that it's consistent with from Comp Plan Blueprint Denver. Just to summarize, though, for the Comp Plan, we found that the West Area Plan is consistent with 39 goals and 87 strategies. And for Blueprint Denver, 31 policies and 74 strategies. And so the and beyond that, we also, the West Area Plan makes use of the same planning tools that you find in Blueprint Denver. And so neighborhood context, future places, the growth strategy. You take Blueprint Denver as a starting point and then identify refinements to those maps through our neighborhood planning process. And Blueprint, by virtue of adopting the West Area Plan, Blueprint Denver will also be updated consistent with these modifications. And so with respect to the second criteria of plan consistency, the finding is that the West Area Plan is consistent with Comp Plan 2040 and Blueprint Denver. The final criteria is long-term view. And the West Area Plan identifies a 2040 planning horizon, 2040 being the year that the plan is planning towards. It establishes a vision for the community that addresses all the same core topics that are addressed by Comp Plan and Blueprint Denver. And it presents an aspirational vision and implementation strategy that will take many years to achieve. And so with respect to the third criteria, we find that the West Area Plan has an appropriate long-term perspective. So the staff recommendation is that Denver City Council adopt the West Area Plan as a supplement to Conference of Plan 20.
Thank you, Courtland. We've got 11 individuals signed up to speak tonight. If you're here in person, after your name's called, please make your way up to the front bench. But we will start online with Adam Johnson.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Yes. Good evening, council. My name's Adam Johnson. I'm a West Colfax District Three Denver resident, and I live in the 1,400 block of Knox Court. I want to express my concerns in opposition of the current West Area Plan's proposed rezoning for the parcel at 1,497 Knox Court, located on the northwest corner of Knox Court and Colfax. This parcel is proposed per the West Area Plan to be allowed to be rezoned for up to five stories. This is inconsistent with the zoning of all the other parcels that are joining the south side of Colfax. When you look at the zoning map, the current zoning map of the area, all parcels zoned UMS 5 all along the south side of Colfax. Those parcels are only zoned that way and only come about a quarter of the way south of Colfax into their respective blocks. And this parcel, it would be allowed to be rezoned to five stories halfway into the block, which would be an exception to everything else that's zoned for five stories along the south side of Colfax. And this isn't consistent, you know, with how everything else is zoned currently along Colfax. And it would be strange and unfair to the single-family residents on our street and the whole look of our street and neighborhood to have, you know, up to a giant five-story building taking up half of our block. And I have several other concerns that would pertain to this rezoning that I'll, for the sake of time, express at the rezoning planning board hearing on April 5 at 3:30. And then also, due to limited time tonight, I would greatly appreciate getting to have a meeting with you, Councilwoman Torres, to discuss this further. So I'll be reaching out to your office to facilitate that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker joining us on Zoom is Yvonne Lopez.
Thank you. I have worked long and hard with the fine team of city planners, Courtney, Chelsea, Fernando, and formerly Valerie and Eugene, who never gave up on the six Ness neighborhoods, collaborating with community leaders, helping to create an inclusive, diverse plan. We continually expressed our lived experience related to equity and health and promoted access to nature, bringing the West Area Plan now to fruition. And although it was challenging, a real struggle over the past three years, especially during COVID, COVID, the plan is the mark of excellence, a real comprehensive plan that we can all be proud of. It was great to work with council members, Torres, Sandoval, and Clark, as they have helped to form and bless this plan. It is an unprecedented plan to know that we lead with a quality of life, more green justice, and the water sacred. The water section is so sacred to me. The history section also helps to remember past redlining injustices that Valverde and other neighborhoods have suffered. The performance zoning in the plan is huge for me, as I hope it will slow down traffic in my beloved Valverde. The sitting county government is responsible for rezoning endeavor, and I ask you to please, please approve and promote zoning that restricts more industrial traffic, as we have suffered enough pollution and toxic gases, so children cannot be, can be safe. And approve zoning that helps to keep the character of the neighborhood. Please encourage investments in more economic development opportunities and bring us up to speed like other neighborhoods, as we are a marginalized neighborhood and we need to be like other neighborhoods with this grocery store and green spaces with a library, a public library. Anyway, I just want to thank everyone, and I approve this plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Valerie Herrera.
Good evening, Madam President. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, go ahead.
All right. Good evening, Denver City Council. My name is Valerie Herrera. I'm currently the Climate Equity Specialist for the City of San Diego and a former senior city planner with the City and County of Denver's Community Planning and Development Department. For the last three years of my professional career, I was given the honor and the privilege to be a part of the West Planning Team. This plan is a long-term visionary, strategic, and inclusive document that has paved a new path for the way planners are thinking about and drafting neighborhood policies and recommendations, with quality of life being the center and foundation. It is a case study that many other cities in the United States can look to with unique integration of past harms, such as naming historic redlining, enhanced and equitable community engagement, and integration of the guidance and feedback of a mighty steering committee, internal and external partnerships, and coordination with three different city council offices. It is with much gratitude that I would like to speak in support of the adoption of this plan and emphasize the importance of implementation, or in other words, putting these recommendations into action. Thank you again for allowing me to participate, and I hope to continue to see Denver be one of the top cities in this country that continues to fully integrate equity into all projects, programs, and long-term processes under the Neighborhood Planning Initiative. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker joining us on Zoom is Sofia Solano.
Hi, good evening. My name is Sofia Solano, and I am the organizing director with Colorado Jobs with Justice. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you all this evening. It is no secret that much of Denver has undergone significant changes due to widespread gentrification. West Denver residents, many of whom have had roots in the area going back generations, are at high risks of displacement from their communities. We applaud, we applaud Councilwoman Torres and the city planners for their intentionality in this process. In 2021, Colorado Jobs with Justice developed a short survey gauging the needs of the West Denver residents, which was deployed throughout the West Denver neighborhoods through a combination of door-to-door canvassing and public events with community partners. We surpassed our initial goal of five hundred surveys by collecting five hundred and thirty. The rising cost of living was the number one issue for most working families in West Denver. Housing prices in the city have skyrocketed over the past two decades, with rent prices increasing eighty-five percent since 2010. It is no surprise that the survey respondents expressed concerns about housing affordability and access to good-paying jobs when they were surveyed. In fact, nearly three-fourths of respondents felt that housing was not affordable in their neighborhood. And while we understand that this is, that not all of Denver's housing problems could be resolved by this plan alone, our members agree that they had hoped for more housing options in this plan. We feel the plan does not do enough to expand housing in general. We need to take additional deliberate steps to address Denver's housing crisis. If not, the city risks losing the irreplaceable cultural fabric of these neighborhoods. West Denver has been a hub for the cities like the Latinx community for generations. We again applaud the efforts thus far and look forward to continuing to work with council to find housing solutions for all of Denverites. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker joining us on Zoom is Adriana Lopez. Adriana, if you can accept the promotion that you've received, we can bring you in. There we go. Adriana, you can go ahead. Adriana, we're not hearing you if you're talking. You're unmuted on our side.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Adriana Lopez, and I am the president of Valverde Neighborhood Association. As you may know, the Valverde neighborhood is home to an industrial neighborhood and has been long overlooked. I realize this plan has taken quite some time to complete and to get to this point, but all that has been in good reason. Truly getting this plan to where it is today has taken a village. The Steering Committee is a committed group of advocates who I've learned so much from in this process. I grew up in Valverde as a kid and get to call this incredible neighborhood home today. I am also thankful for the city staff who have gotten this plan to this point, as well as Councilman Clark's and Council President Torres's offices. At points in time, we didn't all always agree across the board, but I believe this is one of the better plans in the city that at least incorporates more facets of quality of life and equity. I would like to reiterate the points made tonight amongst the Steering Committee colleagues. My hope is that the blood, sweat, and tears that went into this plan will be upheld as a guide to ensure community voice is represented and continues to be represented in southwest Denver and especially amongst the Latinx community. I support the West Denver area plan. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker joining us on Zoom is Elizabeth Walsh.
Good evening, Council, Council members. Thank you so much for your commitment to dismantling ongoing legacies of oppression, as you routinely express the Denver City Council land acknowledgement. I am speaking today in support of adoption of the West Area Plan. This precedent-setting plan is the first to not only acknowledge past and ongoing legacies of systemic oppression, but also to recommend principles, practices, and policies to repair harm and regenerate well-being. The plan's holistic, integrated approach puts equity and vitality up front and center with all sections designed to advance environmental justice and quality of life. Through this pandemic-spreading process, I've been fortunate to wear multiple hats. Primarily, I served as a member of the Steering Committee, representing my West Colfax neighborhood as vice president of the West Colfax Association of Neighbors. Additionally, through my role at the University of Denver's Center for Community Engagement to Advance Scholarship and Learning, I also participated as a co-founder of the Valverde Movement Project, a multi-sector collaborative effort to undesign redlining and reimagine infrastructure investments that support community-rooted health and wealth. I come here before you today wearing this hat as a scholar-practitioner of community and regional planning with a focus on civic engagement and planning processes. As we know, the city of Denver requires that all neighborhood plans are developed through an inclusive planning process. Importantly, this plan emerged from a process that was not only inclusive, but also equitable, as reflected by Comp Plan 2048, equitable planning processes not only meaningfully engage diverse residents, but also, quote, "meet the needs of underserved communities through policies and programs that reduce disparities while fostering places that are healthy and vibrant." Conducting an inclusive, equitable planning process is easier said than done. Significantly, CPD's impressive team of city planners has worked with diverse community partners to meet this challenge. Through the PhotoVoice project that kicked off the process back in 2019, CPD centered the voices and lived experience of neighbors across Barnums and Valley Valverde, Villa Park, and West Colfax, while also cultivating trustworthy relationships with city staff. Throughout the planning process, city staff truly showed up at regular community meetings, neighborhood cleanups, and celebratory events alike. This collaborative spirit continued to thirty-six meetings with Steering Committee members, eight Quality of Life Working Group meetings, as well as meetings with a wide range of city departments and offices, whose staff will help implement the plan. As we move towards plan implementation, robust public participation will be more important than ever. Opportunities abound to empower West Aryan neighbors, especially through engagement methods like participatory budgeting and ongoing community oversight of climate equity investments through CASR. Implementation of the West Area Plan will require adoption of new policies, including aggressive affordable housing policies, green zoning practices to advance, to address the environmental injustices due to legacies of industrial land use. My great hope is that this plan will initiate a new beginning, allowing us to spring forward from the pandemic rather than bouncing back to business as usual. Thank you all.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Moving to chambers, our next speaker is Jeanne Granville.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to be here. It's really an auspicious day for us. I am here representing the Sun Valley Community Coalition as president and also as a member of the Steering Committee. We did take a neighborhood position that we provided an outline of that for you in your packet, so you can read that at your leisure. But I just wanted to say that we think that this is really a good plan. Not perfect, and certainly only a start to framing a more equitable vision for the six West Aryan neighborhoods. Admittedly, it is longer than most plans, but there's a lot of work to be done that needs to be done to repair past harms and build a future that is welcoming and inclusive to new opportunities without displacing those residents and small businesses that have invested years and sometimes generations in living in and serving these communities. We also really wanted to create a document and a toolkit for the community by referencing the multiple plans and numerous task forces and planning efforts to which we've all been contributing over these past many years and creating an implementation matrix that delineates progress metrics, policies that will be needed to advance recommendations, and the city agencies responsible for helping. I wanted to really thank our, our, our city council leaders, Torres, Sandoval, Clark, and Ortega, who really encouraged us and supported us throughout the process. The planning team, which is really quite extensive, Eugene and Val, Chelsea Fernando and Courtland. And I also want to really acknowledge Laura Aldretti, who is the Director of Planning and Development, as well as the Planning Board itself, for really allowing us to have a much more expanded conversation on quality of life issues and really helping us to create our plan for our neighborhoods and are really supporting something that is a little bit outside of the usual template that has been used in the past. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker in chambers is Heidi Newhart.
Hi. My name is Heidi Newhart. I live in West Colfax. I'm here to support the West Area Plan and particularly the focus on quality of life and the integration of a systems approach to planning, and most definitely the addition of the section devoted to our most valuable resource, water. The plan is just the start for the continued conversation around the difficult and often messy realities that our neighborhoods have been actively engaged in around density and displacement. I urge this plan's adoption with the ask for more work and detail to be implemented, so this document can be a living one that actively informs what happens over the next twenty years. I live a half-block from, a half-block off Colfax Ave, a major arterial with buses and access to light rail, with a promise of density along the West Colfax corridor that should support our daily lives and how we want to live in the city. But in the fifteen years of living off Colfax, our neighborhoods have not seen this busy corridor thrive and deliver these benefits along with the development and density pressure. We have instead seen development that contributes to increased car dependence that results in increased volumes of vehicles and speed and a lack of infrastructure to support multiple modes of transportation, putting our and our neighbor's safety at significant risk, along with limiting the amenities that can be supported on Colfax because of fast-moving traffic through our neighborhoods. The West Area Plan was designed to address these and many more inequities in the current system and is meant to be used as a base map to achieve goals that address quality of life. The city will need to design and build not only the infrastructure to support density, but the systems thinking baked into this plan. That will require, among other things, the desiloing of city, state, and regional systems to work together to focus on making our communities safer density. The onus of this needs to live in the public sector and clear implementation plans and led by a city vision around quality of life concerns with people who live here. And we cannot think about accomplishing this without dynamic transit-oriented, without a dynamic transit-oriented vision, which the West Area Plan begs for, and the city of Denver does not have. The West Area Plan will need additional layers to specifically guide density around transit hubs, decenter car culture, and uplift quality of life. Currently, the city's approach to density centers around height, but height recommendations do not address how community needs are met around transit, and developers do not inherently place, make, and don't naturally translate height into quality of life. Trees, bike lanes, affordability, water quality, and small business does not thrive in a car-dominated design and one-dimensional requirements. The intentional recommendations of quality-of-life-driven growth is seen as a way to address development pressure in a way that is responsive to community needs. Thank you for your time and your service and your consideration of this plan and work that needs to be done to support it.
Thank you. Our next speaker in chambers is Melissa Mahia.
Melissa Mahia, I live in Chaffee Park, and I am here today as a planning board member and as a former member of Council President Torres's team, who got to work on this plan and watch it progress in its first couple of years. And I'm really, really happy to be able to be here to speak and support today. So what was really amazing, watching this happen and then watching this come to planning board recently, is the level of care and thoughtfulness and collaboration and intention that is in this plan. The investment from the community and then the responsiveness from the planning team was very apparent and really amazing. Not every plan that comes, I mean, you all know, not every plan that comes through this process has that kind of response and feels like that when people come out to speak about it. This development and outreach process was interrupted by COVID, and everyone had to pivot, went to virtual, it got slowed down, and throughout all of it, the Steering Committee and the community advocated for what they needed to actually be able to engage with the plan, and the planning team was responsive. And so because of that, there was trust and actual collaboration to get to this point. So it is a very long plan. I know we heard that in Steering Committee too. It's a very long plan. But that is also because this plan has not just a vision for the future, but it situates that in the context of, in the history of these neighborhoods and why these specific changes and visions are necessary and why this plan is not just equal, but equitable, and addressing past harms and actually working to move this area of the city forward with the input from the people who live there now, who have roots there and who want their families to have the option to have, continue to have roots in this neighborhood. This area has seen extensive gentrification and displacement. The plan can't make promises. We all know that, but this vision that is shaped and guided by the people who live there actually gives us a roadmap to how to do this in the right way. So really, really happy to be here and support. I hope everyone will support. It is encouraging to see how a plan can actually come to a happy ending, and I hope that this is the kind of outreach that we continue to see.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker is Maureen McCanna.
Hello, council members. I'm Maureen McCanna, a Denver and Valverde resident and a West Area Plan Steering Committee member. I'm excited to be here today to listen to discussion and share my support of the plan, as well as my gratitude for those who went above and beyond to ensure it was rooted in equity and that it balanced valuable community input. The Steering Committee, particularly a committed subset who formed a working group, has deep connections in West communities and took very seriously our responsibility of serving our neighbors to the point of pleading throughout the process for enough time to engage, inform, and gather their feet. for enough time to engage, inform, and gather their feedback. While it may go beyond a traditional plan, West's added context is an important reminder that these infrastructure and policy recommendations are here for the purpose of improving the conditions and opportunities for our residents in West neighborhoods that have historically been intentionally or unintentionally left behind or exploited. After decades since our last plans, this was an opportunity to introduce our neighborhoods' values and visions to stakeholders interested in partnering here in the future, as well as you, council, as you help us realize this vision. In particular, I'd like to highlight what I feel is a strength in the plan, the mobility section. As someone who typically shows up wearing my transportation hat, I was pleased that my Steering Committee peers, the community and CPD, shared my passion for traffic safety and prioritizing, prioritizing active and transit mobility options for those who don't commute by personal vehicle, most by necessity. We recognize that transportation should be a right that influences access to education, jobs, healthcare, recreation, food, and other basic needs. The plan transparently shares West's concerning traffic violence metrics and references preceding city plans with goals to help Denver achieve a safer and more equitable transportation system with major roadways, including Alameda, Federal, Colfax, Highway 6, and I-25. Our neighborhoods are uniquely vulnerable to serious crashes and cut off from each other and the rest of the city. And this plan recognizes the opportunity to improve safety along our high-injury networks, transit along these arterials, and multimodal connections between them. It also captures the need to elevate the South Platte, Lakewood, and Meere Gulch trails as important connectors and green spaces. All this is to say that the consensus among residents and the transportation recommendations in the plan under the long way the West Side has to go to ensure freedom of mobility through safe, dignified, affordable, reliable, and sustainable options. Thank you for taking the time to review the product of three years of collaboration between Steering Committee members, West Area Neighbors and Allies, and CPD and city departments. An enormous and heartfelt thank you to Val, Eugene, Cortland, Fernando, and Chelsea. We look forward to your su- support on council tonight and long-term in helping us, uh, champion this plan and its projects to make our West Side even more, a more special place to live and one where folks can afford to continue to live and enjoy these positive changes. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker joining us in chambers is Jaime Aguilar.
Hello, council. I'm Jaime Aguilar. I live in Villa Park neighborhood. I'm here to speak in support of the West Area Neighborhood Plan. Um, as a member of the Steering Committee, I've personally been in this process since the beginning. In 2019, I've been through the majority of the 36 or so meetings um, with the Planning Office and many more in my community. Um, being part of this group was to share our lived experience with our neighborhoods, um, being conduits for the lifelong residents, um, and the new residents too. An important task that took up a lot of our time as volunteers in this community. Um, we had a lot of changes in these three years of work, including a global pandemic that saw all of our lives dramatically shift. We see many people move away, some new people move in, and unfortunately, many neighbors, including some on the Steering Committee, passed away. Um, throughout this time, we're doing such a great job of giving insight that other city departments decided to piggyback on our efforts. Um, sometimes their poaching efforts were diluting the MPI West task at hand, but, um, it was after the summer of 2020, I remember looking at this plan beyond the photo voice research projects and in-person feedback meetings we were having with our neighbors. Um, it was one of my neighbors, a disabled renter, um, on the West Side of Villa Park, asked Eugene, "What is equity?" And I thought it was just a fantastic thing that really was a turning point for a lot of the perspective on whose voice we as a Steering Committee and representatives worked for on this plan. Not only do we feel the pressure to become experts in planning without a pause in the process, but community listening became a guiding light of what I felt my expectations were for all people in this area. That's equity and access to resilient, connected neighborhoods. Learning and seeing the impacts of broken treaties, redlining, and disinvestment on the West Side. Did you know my neighborhood used to be part of the city dump? Um, well, all of these perspectives were brought into light. What you have here is not a normal approach or how neighborhood plans have been historically looked at for our city. The essence of this process and outcomes you see is from authentic lived experience with community listening as the guide. The work that was done to get to this point was with empathy and with a lot of our valuable spare time. What I have heard is that my community doesn't want to be zoned out of our homes and continue to get the short end of the stick for those with privilege. We look beyond land use in this plan, sorry, for a quality of life that will create stronger neighborhoods in a geographically challenged area. And with the lens of ecological and environmental justice to help guide us, as you have heard from others speaking before. If this plan fails on anything, it's with social justice, which I believe is economic development, jobs, city centers within the neighborhoods. And we also need your help to create strategies to curb displacement and gentrification so that we can all thrive. This work was about setting a plan for development, not developers continuing to tell us how to develop our neighborhoods. Equity is not zoning ourselves out of our own communities and correcting mistakes in the past. From the broken Fort Weiss Treaty of 1861, historic redlining to blueprint Denver. Again, I'm happy to support this plan, the work that was done, and the contributions from everyone involved. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, that concludes our speakers. Are there questions for members of council on Council Bill 23-0186? Councilwoman Ortega?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I did a coup, I did attend a couple of the meetings and, um, I didn't, looking through the documents, I didn't see the direct interface with the, um, federal project, not federal, I'm sorry, the I-25 corridor and some of the discussions that have taken place around what might be happening with that corridor that is congested on a daily basis. It doesn't matter what time of day you travel, it's pretty, especially around Sixth Avenue and, uh, where some of those on and off ramps are. So I just wanted to ask, um, how did that play into this overall plan? And, and, um, I didn't get into the actual document. I looked at the slide deck to see if there were, um, specific issues or recommendations around how to, how to interface with that or deal with potential. So when you look at all the growth that's going to happen on the West Side of the highway, it's going to exacerbate challenges with the I-25 corridor, Federal Boulevard, and then will have impact on these neighborhoods. Whether it's just traffic alone, it could be also, um, threats for displacement and gentrification. So how much did I-25 and development on the West Side of that fit into the overall, uh, planning process?
Beltline aspect of that factor did, like, quite a bit, right? So you have, uh, the Stadium District, which has future development guided by the Stadium District Master Plan, um, DHA, um, and all their work in Sun Valley. Um, all that's in that corridor. Um, and so we did, uh, this plan, um, defers to the Stadium District Master Plan for specific guidance. Um, so we, yeah, there's, there's some detailed stuff in there about building heights um, and incentives for getting more height there. Um, it's pretty nuanced. So we, basically, this plan says, refer to that plan for that specific guidance. And we just tried to be, um, consistent with the planning that had already been done. Uh, same thing, uh, with DHA, we worked with them. And actually, one of the things that came about kind of late in the process was that we realized that, um, the earlier drafts of the West Area Plan were recommending, uh, more, uh, building height than was actually needed or a part of, um, the plans, um, in that, in that area. Um, and so we lowered it, um, to be consistent with, uh, existing zoning. Um, and a lot of that had to do with the, uh, the categories that were chosen, you know, for the height map. And then, you know, we had revisions of the, the height map as well that were later in the process to make it, uh, more legible and easier to understand and clarify what was base guidance versus incentive heights. Um, with respect to I-25, uh, we've addressed it, um, and I'll let Fernando jump in if, if I don't characterize it accurately. Um, but more is a barrier, um, that needs, uh, study for additional crossings for the river, um, and I-25. And we have some specific locations identified in the Mobility Chapter that shows where extra connections might make sense. Uh, and that's also true of Sixth Avenue and Colch.
Okay. Um, I, I know we had another fatality at 14th and Federal. And that is one of the number one, um, intersections in the city for pedestrian fatalities. And, you know, that's along the Federal Corridor, which I know at the South End has had some major challenges and issues as well. Um, was there any specific recommendations around 14th Avenue? Or is that all still directly tied into the sort of redo of the Federal Colfax, um, cloverleaf that's been talked about with the, um, West Colfax, uh, bid, Business Improvement District?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure. Do you happen to know Fernando?
I mean, it's kind of on the edge of this boundary, right?
Can you introduce yourself, Fernando?
Hi, Councilman, I'm on the wood with CPD. And for that specific intersection, I think all along Federal, it was recommended safe crossings. I think, I think that one and some other ones along Bayard, first and, first and second, they were highlighted as important recum, crossings. But also, I think just, eh, the 14th Avenue West of that was highlighted as for, for further study for a bike facility, so. But that crossing was mostly into the federal, either BRT study or also the Federal Colfax interchange.
I'm, I'm raising this one because, gosh, it's been maybe three, four years since, um, I actually would, did an amendment to our budget where we added an additional $5 million through the budget process to do some further look at that intersection. And I'm not really sure what's come of that. Uh, Councilwoman Torres, Council President Torres, I don't know if you have any updated info, but, um, I'm not sure that we've seen anything from Dottie that will do any interim or long-term solutions for the pedestrian crossings because of light rail being on the east side, a lot of bus traffic, you know, people letting off on both sides of Federal. Um, so there's a lot of pedestrian connections back and forth at that intersection. And I haven't seen any improvements done there, um, going back to, you know, us trying to address that as a priority area for the city. So just putting that on your, on your radar that some of us are, are raising concerns about that as well. And I know that ties into the overall plan, so.
Yeah, and, and one of the, if I can, um, interject a bit too. One of the things that I think is important to layer on this is that there are other, there are other corridor plans that are also in place. So, um, a specific federal corridor, Denver Moves, um, effort is underway as well. And that may, I think it's helpful, um, to also follow up with Dottie on what you've requested in the past, um, and where that lives. Because what we're looking at from the District Three lens is what's Denver Moves proposing. And it, I don't know if it's incorporated, what you're talking about or not.
Yeah, okay. I'll follow up with that. Okay.
Okay, that's all I had. Thank you. Thank you. And seeing no one else in queue. Public hearing is closed. Comments by members of council on Council Bill 23-0186? Councilwoman Sandoval?
Thank you, Madam President. As somebody who represents a portion of this neighborhood plan, I just want to thank the residents for staying engaged and making it here with us. Ultimately, this is your plan. And the way that I look at planning is it's for the next seven generations of Denverites. So you set the future for my kids and my kids' kids. So thank you for your involvement and thank you to your commitment. Um, in a neighborhood plan, to Jaime's point, you do end up becoming a planner. And you, it's unintended. You don't think you sign up to participate in your neighborhood plan and learn the nuances of water and learn the nuances of the built environment. And you really did take a deep dive. So thank all of you and thank you, Cortland, for being steadfast with CPD in your leadership through this. We've had a couple, um, people step away from this plan and you were ever so steady, um, with this plan. And thank you for Fernando and thank you Valerie and thank you to everyone who participated. And I also just want to call out, um, as somebody who's worked for the city for over a decade, this is the first plan where our back door was not to the Platte River. It was really important to me to see, to make sure that we highlighted the Platte River. Oftentimes, it was discarded in our past and it is actually the confluence where Native Americans met. A place of peace, a place of prosperity, a place where people could go to come and have ideas. And that's how I've always thought of the Platte River as someone who was born and raised here is a place that I call home. And so I'm thankful that we have a plan that incorporates the Platte River and incorporates all of the different aspects of the West Area. I also, one thing unique that is unique to this plan is we called out Discover Denver. So Discover Denver is a process where you go through a neighborhood and it highlights the built environment. It highlights homes that could be possibly dedicated for landmark structures, and it takes a snippet of time. And I really worked with Eugene and Becca from Landmark, um, Preservation to make sure that that was highlighted so that when people, such as my kids, look to this plan in the future, they understand what this built environment in West Colfax looked like. Want to thank President Torres for your leadership and your steadfast commitment and all of your staff. My staff, Naomi Grundens, who's no longer here with me and whom Melissa picked up after and has carried on, and to Councilman Clark and his staff and everyone else. So thank you all for your commitment, and I hope my colleagues support this. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you very much. And seeing no one else in queue, I want to offer, um, my own comments. Um, thank you to our speakers. Um, I appreciate all of your insight, your reflection. Um, and I will call that constituent back about Knox Court. Um, but, uh, I've grown up in Villa Park, um, my entire life, and I know these six neighborhoods really well. Um, I was surrounded by peers, by council members, Steering Committee members, community who love the West Side, who love these neighborhoods and want to see visible and tangible improvements. They were an unwavering, uh, group centering on quality of life and laid out for me as the councilperson that will represent all six of these neighborhoods in the next term, um, the next set of outcomes and projects, um, that we need to be queuing up. These residents brought their expertise to the table, every single one of them, and I'm so grateful and I'm so proud. Um, this community is also under no illusion that this plan is a panacea to the many transformational projects and vision for these six West Denver neighborhoods that are yet to come. But it is their way to infuse their collective voice, um, for projects, improvements, and anti-displacement strategies and higher quality of life. Steering Committee focused on three central pillars. Acknowledgement of land, leadership, and vision, uh, for equitable development. Um, beyond bouncing back, so coming back better. Um, and the adoption is the beginning. Um, for our future work, um, and for anyone's future work in these neighborhoods, buckle up because there are community leaders who know what outcomes they want and will dig in for the long-term, and they do not exist in neighborhood silos. They know that development in Sun Valley affects all the neighborhoods. Infrastructure in West Colfax affects all the neighborhoods. Community amenities in Valverde affects all of the neighborhoods. They see the vision. I'm so proud to work alongside you. And I want to thank, um, councilmembers Clark and Sandoval. Um, this was a full-team effort. Um, and thank you to the CPD team, as well as CPD staff who supported the early plan work, uh, Eugene Howard and Val Herrera, um, and our current team, Cortland, Fernando, and Chelsea. Thank you all so much. Um, and with that, I hope my colleagues will support this evening. Um, Mr. Secretary, roll call on Council Bill 23-0186.
See you, Nebaka.
Hi.
Black?
Hi.
Flynn?
Hi.
Gomor?
Hi.
Heinz?
Hi.
Cashman?
Hi.
Ortega? Sandoval?
Hi.
Sawyer? Madam President?
Hi. Mr. Secretary, close the voting and announce the results.
Ten eyes.
Ten eyes. Council Bill 23-0186 has passed. Thank you all so much. Um, one quick announcement. On Monday, April 24th, 2023, council will hold a required public hearing on Council Bill 23-0242. council will hold a required public hearing on Council Bill 23-0242, changing the zoning classification for 1089 South Ogden Street in Washington Park West. And on Council Bill 23-0243, changing the zoning classification for 640 West Tennessee Avenue in Affmar Park. Any protests against Council Bills 0242 or 0243 must be filed with the council offices no later than Monday, April 17th, 2023. There being no further business before this body, this meeting is adjourned.